...
Ellie, could you please read the certification of compliance?
The time and location of this meeting was published in the Adver Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the town's superintendent of the 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting at reasonable compliance of minutes, and this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the open public meeting act.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Quentis, Mr. Garfield.
Here.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable.
Here.
Mr. Klinsfeld.
Here.
Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Raiset.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, John, direct to reflect that me and Mr. Garfield will be sitting on number one, the public hearing, who will not be sitting on number two, the majority of the meetings.
Thank you.
Okay. Swearing on the professionals?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear upon testimony and need to cross the board for the republic to ensure that it is true?
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, your possession resolutions.
SB 2326 for Shearah Klein, it's a major site plan for a school addition. Eligible to vote, Mr. Sperr, Mr. Herzl. I believe that's it.
Yeah, Ellie, I know there were a lot of, uh, you'll be here. Yeah.
But maybe commit late on that one?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That's why I didn't have you down. Okay.
That was the extension of the school, right?
Yes.
I remember there was a lot of talk about it. Everything was, uh...
Yes, we did review the legislation and you tell if, like, emailed it out and it is on the, uh, we don't think we had any concerns with it or...
Um, I don't know. Yeah, I definitely wasn't...
I'll double check for you. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I have you backwards. Mr. Stern, I have this meeting, so he cannot act on that. Mr. Isaacson, yes, you can. Okay, so I'll switch there.
Just a little more than our second, in your favor.
And the second one, 2228, I have a few too much if you can set up. And so I had that one backwards, I believe. Um, Mr. Stern, Mr. Herzl, and Mr. Meyer can vote on that.
Okay, the motion. Move second or favor right.
Thank you.
Okay, on to public hearing.
Public hearing item number one is SB 1937A, extension of the city's improved site plan for a school campus for Beth Magglio Gova.
Okay, if ever the governor can stand up. I know that is a special.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I have a power of the government. Uh, this application is previously approved, uh, later in 2008, then was under the permanent extension act. It was told, uh, there was then there was some litigation with regard to the approval that then, uh, completed and they proceeded with their approvals and gave them a file. They received previously two one-year extensions. Um, this is a world-class facility, a library, um, for, uh...
Sun Jam Street, right?
Correct. Uh, and based upon the size of it, it takes a more, it's a longer time to have it completed properly.
The litigation was finished?
Yes, the litigation is over.
Okay. So what do you give?
So we're asking for a five-year extension. Is it according to section 4558, uh, based on the comprehensive limits of the, uh...
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
Um, that is important to give, uh, up to a five-year extension, and it's appropriate, uh, because the act that is later entered on the basis of outside things.
Usually we give one to three up as we give.
Yeah, well, you can give, uh, requesting up for five years, that's what the authority is. I, I have no idea.
We have a motion.
Yeah.
I'll start. Okay. Any roll call, please?
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Sperr.
Yes.
Mr. Klinsfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and I check this, uh, very briefly, I have a resolution prepared, I have a circular, it just says, whereas PMP has an application, conduct the public hearing on July 23, 2019, uh, reviewed the, uh, submission of the applicant, plus the testimony of the planner, and the, uh, representation of the applicant, seeks a, uh, an extension statutory protection period under 4550, uh, 45852, previously approved for primary and final application, uh, court notes, yeah, for these primary and final in June of 2011, July 2011, statutory protection with a part two different date, which is July 26, 2013. Um, the applicant seeks, and now this fiber approval is here by grant, that suggests the... Have I applied with the, uh...
Yes.
All right, so while, uh, some of the guys, that's the rest of the topic, yeah.
Want to say what's... No. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. And Mr. Stone, will you turn over the chair to him?
We will continue with application SB 2310, made by the Department of Public Health. This is a continued public hearing. Mr. Sperr will start when you are ready, no rush.
We're going to continue, and I note that we have a court reporter here this evening, so I assure her that we'll be, we would be on our best behavior. There's only one person speak at a time, and please direct all your comments to the chair, and please only speak when recognized by the chair. I'll be the first one to violate that, so.
Yeah, Mr. Donato, you look me up next to continue your discussion. Before we start, you have, Mr. Schneider, you both come up to the podium, please. How are you both?
Hey.
Good to see you both. So I think last time we did really well. Um, we got through about three hours of our meeting, and then I think we all started to get a little tired, a little cranky, I know I did. Um, so first off, if I was, uh, harsh with either of you, I apologize, and I would request two things if we could. One is, under no circumstances, microphone grab. I'm trying to figure out how we can, in that fourth hour, we start getting a little tired, I want to make sure the meeting stays focused and gets to a good conclusion. The second thing would be, if there's an objection, there's one witness, and either of you has an objection, stand up, come on up, you can stand up dramatically, I don't care, then let the attorney who's speaking finish, and then the witness will not answer until the other counsel has an opportunity to voice their objection, and you can go back and forth until you're done, each of you, both of you can be heard, then John will give me his feedback, and I'll make a decision. Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, I agree. I just, I, I have to say that there is an element of discomfort that I experience when I'm at the microphone and Mr. Schneider is kind of like right behind me, and I've never really had to experience that before, despite many, many times I've had, I've presented in similar situations. So perhaps if we can just create a jurisdictional boundary, if we get up to make the objection, I'll move over and leave here, but I just don't like somebody agreeing, it feels like, it's very uncomfortable.
So, Mr. Donato, I'm going to limit it to microphone grabbing, you are an extremely experienced, extremely competent attorney, and you can hold your own, um, so I'm not going to define personal spaces. I just love that the microphone grabbing both sides exacerbated the emotions, and what we're trying to do here tonight is shed light, not generate heat.
I agree, I have to...
Mr. Schneider, just a second, say?
Yes, I, I would just note that my recollection from the last meeting was that, um, Ms. Donato was going to present the testimony of a planner and the testimony of a hydrogeologist, I'm not sure what order that would be presented in, and I would just note that much of what the hydrogeologist has submitted in the past was done in the context of the CAPRA application, where there was a whole range of issues looked at, um, in terms of stormwater management and all of that, various elements, in terms of groundwater mounding, in terms of, uh, retaining walls, in terms of a whole variety of those related things, and that was reviewed both sides of the DEP, which issued a CAPRA permit, and that CAPRA permit's now at the L, and before, we'll decide whether it was proper. My request is that we not spend the board's time going over those same issues, that those are appropriate issues for CAPRA, and there's no reason to spend an hour or two to rehashing, um, those issues that are in the DEP's jurisdiction but under CAPRA.
May I respond, please?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's...
See, you're actually nice.
I know, thank you. This is an issue, I wish the position of the applicant and the position of fairways is diametrically opposed. The CAPRA application certainly did review stormwater, but what is before this board is a general development plan application, and there is a specific provision in your ordinance, that stormwater plan is a mandatory component of the general development plan. Uh, there is concurrent jurisdiction to review stormwater management, it is mandatory for this board to do so by the GDP ordinance, by the residential site proofing standards, and by the requirement of findings that you have that are based in the municipal land use law, that this applicant has a burden of proving that this development will not have an unreasonable adverse impact on the area, and your attorney rightfully ruled on a legal basis, at the very outset of these proceedings, that the question of adverse impact was something that you had to evaluate. So the question of stormwater management is squarely, properly, and will be on the table, and we will be presenting that testimony this evening.
Mr. Schneider, any else?
May I add something, Chairman, if I could?
Please.
Possibly I can save a little time here. I'm not arguing stormwater management is a component of the GDP. That being said, let's look at, at this point, this application is more of a concept level. Uh, we are not going to do detailed reviews of any designs unless or until we get site plans and/or subdivisions for this project. Um, just so everyone knows clearly, I have no problem with hearing your end for a fact or forth, but we're not in any position to say the stormwater design is right, the stormwater design is wrong. We don't have a stormwater design.
And that is one of the major deficiencies that we will point out. It is something identified in your ordinance, it is a requirement. I, I think that there's been this, this, this presentation that would like this board to believe, that the GDP application is merely just this casual little presentation of a big concept plan, and, and to the contrary, it sets the number of units, it vests them with rights against changes in zoning, it gives them the right to come back here for site plans and subdivisions, and then if you say, gee, this doesn't fit anymore because that stormwater agency needs to be larger, all of a sudden you vested that with those number of units, and that is the essential dilemma that you face and that we intend to address. So I understand that it may not have been reviewed by the engineer for the board, but I think that that is a mistake, and I think we will present to you what the ordinance states and what we believe is really a serious, uh, some very serious issues with the stormwater.
Okay. Mr. Schneider?
I, I note only that there was a stormwater management report aired, and that I concur with what the board's professional has said.
Okay. John, do you have any feedback or insight?
Yes, I do. Um, the, uh, covered by the MLUL as well as the ordinance, and one of the required contents of the application is five stormwater management plan, say, the method of controlling and managing stormwater, and number six, an environmental inventory, including a general description of the vegetation, soils, topography, geology, surface hydrology, climate, cultural resources of the site, existing man-made structures, features, and the probable impact of the development of the environmental attributes of the site. So, um, I think Ms. Donato, um, has every right to bring an expert to address those points, and, uh, I think the board has to determine, uh, based on what that expert says and what everybody else says, whether, um, now these two criteria can be satisfied. I think as the chair, you have the authority and the responsibility to control the proceedings, in other words, keep it at, um, 10,000 feet. I don't know that we have to do the mathematical calculations for the stormwater, you know, and I doubt Ms. Donato would get into that kind of detail. So, uh, let, let's just see how it unfolds, but I think these types of issues are relevant, and, and it's something the board has to take into account, she has every right to bring an expert to, uh, to, uh, you know, make her case in regard to those elements.
So I, I agree.
We'll certainly make sure we keep it...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, we want a full exposition of case of both sides, and we want to keep it relevant, uh, and keep it on track. I think we're going to err on the side of too much information versus too little. Uh, so yeah, you can proceed. Kind of lay out a roadmap for me tonight of what you're going to present to.
Yes, uh, I have Jeffrey Gall, he is a civil engineer, and he specializes in stormwater management, he's with Princeton Hydro, and I also have Barbara Woolley Yellen, I think she may be delaying arrival, but she's a licensed professional planner, and she would be testifying as well.
I like it.
She will be testifying as well.
About also stormwater?
No, she's going to be testifying, testifying regarding general planning issues involving this application and the standards contained in the general development plan ordinance and in the, uh, the plan development ordinance that was adopted in 2017.
Okay. And, Mr. Schneider, I imagine you'll be crossing each of these witnesses, or?
If that's likely, I, I'll make the decision. Okay, the testimony, that's certainly likely.
Okay, fine. Um, and Ms. Donato, just as a reminder for the audience, do you think we will be able to get through both of those, plus Mr. Schneider's cross-examination by 10?
Well, I think that that's a very good possibility. Much of it depends on the number of times there's objections, and I, you know, I, I think that that certainly affects it in a negative way in terms of stretching out the time, but I, I do think that Mr. Gall probably could be done in total, and, uh, we could at least start on the plan.
Okay.
Depending how, how it goes, because the members of the public have the right...
John, I would love to have the members of the public actually, you know, sort of ask these some questions this evening tonight, but if we can't, we can't, so, for our service.
Okay, Dave, let me just reverse my class.
I'd like to call Jeffrey Gall, please.
You're more than welcome to sit.
Yeah, maybe, uh, sit. Yeah, why don't we do that, because you don't have the chair microphone, might be grabbed.
I'm starting to feel like Hillary Clinton. She didn't walk to the conference room.
All right, uh, sir, Mr. Gall, may I ask you to please raise your right hand? Do you swear a firm testimony to give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
I do.
Uh, please state your name and your profession.
My first name is, uh, Jeffrey, it's spelled G-E-O-F-F-R-E-Y, middle initial M, last name Gall, it's Jeffrey Gall. Um, I am a civil engineer specializing in stormwater management, uh, geotechnical engineering and civil engineering.
Do you want to qualify your witness briefly, or you?
Yes, I will be doing so. Uh, before I do so, I also want to just verify, uh, Ms. Morris, I have the, the last exhibit was D5, so we're starting with D6 this evening. Okay, now, Mr. Gall, what is your occupation?
Um, as I stated, I'm a civil engineer. Um, I'm the president of my firm, Princeton Hydro, I've been in business, uh, just going on twenty, or a little over 21 years now.
And do you have any specialty in civil engineering?
Well, I, in my firm specialize in, uh, one of the specialties is stormwater management, as well as geotechnical engineering. We also specialize in, uh, landnology, lake ecology, um, regulatory regulations, basically. Uh, we also, uh, do, um, resiliency planning as well.
Okay, and what is your educational background?
Um, I have a BS in civil engineering from McCreary's University, from, and I graduated in 1990. I also have a master of engineering from the University of Wisconsin, a master of engineering management, uh, that I obtained in 2013.
Okay, and, uh, have you provided with, uh, your curricula vitae this, uh, evening?
I did.
And is this the...
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So I'd like to have the CV marked as D6, and I have a loose copy of, including for Mr. Schneider. I'd like to just highlight a couple of issues with respect to your qualifications. Just let me guess.
Uh, Mr. Schneider, so help us, yes. To move things along, we'll strip away and ask you his qualifications. You're my best friend of the evening.
Well, I, I would like the board to, to just have a little bit of a highlight as to the extensive expertise that Mr. Gall has in this field and, and the qualifications of his firm. So, you, uh, you said that you do geotechnical design, can you tell me what that is?
Uh, geotechnical engineering is essentially the engineering of soils and rock, uh, for the purpose of creating man-made structures, uh, stabilizing slopes, constructing earthworks, uh, for example, building foundations, uh, deep and shallow, meaning tiles or shallow spray puddings. Uh, we, uh, geotechnical engineers work on dams and slope stability analysis for those dams, um, and sea vision, groundwater flow, uh, through, uh, structures.
And have you testified before planning and zoning boards in New Jersey and qualified as an expert in civil engineering, stormwater engineering, and geotechnical engineering?
Yes, I have.
And have you also qualified to testify in the Superior Court of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
And is there any place else that you testified?
Uh, testified in, um, uh, before the, uh, the utility board in Vermont, I've also testified in several townships in Pennsylvania as well.
And do you do work on all sides of the table? Do you represent developers in your, your firm?
Yes, we do. We, we represent a range of NGOs and non-governmental organizations, uh, we also, uh, environmental organizations, for example, uh, we work for government, we have a, a current, an existing contract with US Army Corps of Engineers out of the New York District. Uh, we also, uh, work for developers, we've worked for K-Hub Manium in the past, we've worked for Orleans Home Builders, when they existed, um, and after that JP Orleans, which is, uh, the newly formed, uh, company from the founder there, um, and we work for various other developers as well, um, including, um, industrial developers, um, and we also work in the area of, uh, water mitigation for developers as well.
And do you also do work for any municipal agencies in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, we represent, uh, we've, well, we've represented Princeton, the municipality of Princeton, I got to say that right, uh, we represent Reddington Township and Harvey County, uh, we also represent Bethlehem Township and Harvey County, um, as well.
Um, what role have you had with respect to the stormwater management regulations that the state of New Jersey adopted pursuant to the Clean Water Act?
Uh, in terms of...
The phase two regulations, the non-point form...
It's, it's writing or reviewing it or...
Any, any role that you have?
Uh, well, we've, we often are on, um, committees, the, the professional committees, they, uh, volunteer organizations, um, for example, some of the NGOs ask us to sit on the committees to comment and provide input on the stormwater management regulations.
And, uh, so you, are you familiar with the stormwater management regulations that governs major developments in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I do.
And this project would qualify as a major development?
Yes, it would.
I'd like the board to accept his qualifications as a civil engineer, uh, specializing in the stormwater management industry.
Just, um, if I may, Mr. Chair, it, it, does the field of engineering recognize a, uh, a specialty per se in those fields, and is there any kind of credential or licensure associated with that?
No, it's, it's a, uh, well, it's, it's interesting, you should ask, it's a lot of time.
So I, I, that's, the answer's no, that's all, all I wanted to know, thank you. So, so I would recommend that, you know, we accept it as an expert in the field of civil engineering, um, the board can weigh and consider it as a credential, but I, I don't know if you, we could recognize an expert, uh, with a specialty in, in stormwater management in a center of per se, um, it, because there is no such specialty in the field of engineering, apparently. I mean, if there were, that would be different, but...
Not, not a certified specialty.
I mean, certainly, I'm not diminishing your experience or extensive credentials in that field.
No, I, I'm...
I just don't want to define the expert per se as a...
We'll recognize him for all of his governmentally acknowledged expertise.
Well, I, I kind of have to disagree on the position that Mr. Jackson is taking, and perhaps if I ask, uh, Mr. Gall a question, have you ever been qualified as geotechnical, in geotechnical...
A board, board's recognizing for that, yes.
Albeit in stormwater?
Yes.
So I think that the fact that there's not a certification doesn't mean he's an expert, but, um, I, you know, I don't want to mix it too fine, I just think he has a much broader expertise than simply general civil engineering. There are certain, are there certain things that a general engineer can I do with respect to, like soils or anything of that nature?
Yes, well, and actually, that, that you're, we're bringing up a good point, because one of the things we did talk about is my professional engineering license. So I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as, uh, seven other states, um, but professional engineering, um, when you get licensed, you're correct, it's a general civil engineering license for professional engineering, um, but as far as the engineering practices concerned, you're supposed to be focusing, you have to know your limitations in terms of expertise and experience, so for example, even knowing a professional engineer, I wouldn't do electrical engineering, or I wouldn't do mechanical engineering, and those kind of things.
Okay. How are you? I think that. Okay, now, can you tell me, what documents and materials did you review in connection with your testimony this evening?
I reviewed the plan, using the general in ordinance, the general development plan requirements. I reviewed the submitted documents by the applicant, which are, there are many that are posted on the municipal website. I also reviewed prior stormwater designs for the fairways at Lake Ridge Development, including the prior, prior GDP permit was issued back in the 90s, as well as a final settlement that was prepared by, both prepared by Giuliano and Lynch and Giuliano, back in the 1990s. I also reviewed the CAPR application, and those materials when they were submitted. The point of clarification on that is, the permit application was initially denied, but it was issued, the permit was issued after a negotiated settlement, as I understand. So those are the documents that I reviewed. And I also completed site walks on the perimeter of the property, looked at stormwater outlets, and trying to get myself familiar with the drainage features.
And when you refer to the CAPR permit, you participated in the 2017 CAPR permit filed by GDMS, the entity associated with the current act of this board?
That is correct.
All right, can you give me a description, like a little site description, that is relevant to what you're going to be presenting?
Yes. So essentially, the, the history of the site is likely people are aware, but I'll repeat it, is it was a, historically used as a sand and gravel mining operation. According to the application, or the environmental impact statement submitted by the applicant, there was also agricultural uses of the property, portions of it. It was basically mining extraction, likely due to the excellent nature of the sands and gravels for road construction materials. I also went through, one of the things I was to have missed, I went through and reviewed historical aerial imagery, going back to the 30s, and it looked as if even as early as 1931, the site was starting to begin to be used as a sand mining operation. I went through the other photographs in '72 and '86, their mining and the land, of the land, in the area where the landfill is now, which is essentially west of the site, or due west. And by 1995, the mining operation, at least on the aerial photographs, appeared to have slowed down, and areas had begun to revegetate, which I assume are the same tree safe areas when we overlay them. A review of the current elevations, you know, even as the golf course illustrated the factors it was creating during the mining operations. The ponds are also there, and in my professional opinion, based on my review of soils in the area and other information, that those ponds are essentially exposed, expose regional groundwater table.
Now, the applicant submitted an environmental impact statement in the 2017 CAPR regarding soils. So can you just basically give us an overview of the soil types and how they affect what is being posed?
Well, the soil types that were, and the interesting part is, because it was a mining operation, most of the soil structure, soils, when they're mapped, are really looking at the top 60 inches or so. And so when you do a mining operation and you tear, and you remove the soil, you essentially remove the different soil types. There were soil types that are dictated, like downer series, if they're very granular material, coarse grained, as I said, representative material that's actually very well used for road construction material. It also can tend to be loose, it's highly erodible, and it also, it can be used for structural support for construction.
Okay, and so are there stability concerns with the type of soils that exist on the site?
Yes, if there's an issue with, if the materials aren't placed in the correct manner, and if they can actually be somewhat unstable, if not compact appropriately.
Okay, now, could you describe the application for this general development plan that you reviewed?
Yes, so, the, what I did is I reviewed the applicant's materials in terms, and I know you've heard this before, but to reiterate, mine, to show my familiarity, there are 556 residential units, residential units proposed. And as I understand, while there are no current basements proposed, they are allowed, and there's a potential total of 1,100, excuse me, basement apartments, or there'll be basements, but a total of 1,112 residential units that could potentially be built. There are also four proposed community buildings, and they'll be reusing the existing clubhouse, which will remain. The stormwater management components, based on the stormwater management plan that was reviewed, consists of three groups, with the applicant's engineer identified as A, B, and C. Basin A consists of an infiltration basin. Basin B consists of two hydraulically connected basins. Basin C consists of five hydraulically connected basins. And what we mean by hydraulically connected, I mean, they have pipes between them, and so that water can flow freely back and forth between those basins and function essentially as one basin. The other thing that's interesting is they, that they talk about that they're going to be equipping each unit with a seepage pit. If you're not aware of what a seepage pit is, it's a subsurface concrete structure that has, it's perforated, it has holes in it. And so when water goes into it, it can then permeate out through the holes into the soil. And if it's, if the soils are appropriate, groundwater is appropriate, they can then infiltrate into the ground and recharge groundwater. One of the other things to note, and I'll be showing it on the, on the plan, is there's a 48-inch diameter pipe that comes into the site from the fairways development. It's a 48-inch pipe, it's a four-foot diameter pipe, it's a pretty large, basically a very large structure. And reviewing the applicant's existing condition survey, and I'll talk about this a little later as well. The survey stops just over the property line, and it does not give an indication of where it comes from.
And what comes from the 48-inch?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to read what that four-foot diameter pipe is draining. Thank you. One of the things that I think is important, and I know, I will be talking a lot in generality, so we won't be going specifically into detail. We're not going to be arguing about heat flows and things like that for this application. But one of the things we wanted to reiterate, and I think, is I understand the way you have to make, even though this is a concept plan, you have to make a decision based on something that is real, something you can get your hands on, and so that you know that when you approve 556 units, you know those units can be built. And so, that is something that's in your purview, and so understanding how they propose to construct the site is highly important. One of the things I wanted to go into is, and I'm going to be, I'm just going to be talking about the retaining walls for a few minutes, is this is a highly, highly engineered site. There's a lot of bells and whistles that are associated with making this site work, for the number of units that they're proposing. For example, we have all those retaining, or, excuse me, all those detention basins. I did not even go into the underground subsurface infiltration basins that are also being proposed for some of the other community facilities on the site. But there's a lot of basins. There is the issue of the five, and I'll talk about this later, is the 556 infiltration pits that need to be maintained. And who will maintain them, we'll talk about that. The retain, there are retaining walls in this site. One of the, as I understand from the, when I was here, listening to the prior testimony, it was the applicant's engineer discussed the fact that they're not sure what the retaining walls are, they're not sure where they're going to be, this is a concept. But in fact, and I know, we don't want to reveal the CAPR application, but the CAPR application essentially, or at least the settlement part of the application, basically limits the layout, albeit some other differences, small differences, although important ones that I'll outline later.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Goll, you made a comment that it's the board's purview to consider, I'll call it the architectural components and feasibility of building. It sounded like you were referring to structural engineering, the way a retaining wall may be built, etc. I'm just looking for the elements in the GDP, and I don't see that anywhere. I don't know, I think the board should be worried about planning. But the construction and whether it can be engineered and built and in the construction, I don't, I don't really believe that to be the board's worry.
Well, I'll be talking also about what, and I will focus, and understand, understand your concern, I will be focusing specifically on the ordinance items, and discussing what we believe, my professional opinion is deficient, and why.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that point, please proceed.
All right, thank you.
I would like to clarify, you know, that this, the use of the idea that this is a concept plan is really a misnomer. It's a general development plan, it is, it is the planning master plan of the site, which then dictates the future. So you need to know, because it vests the developer with the right to the number of units that you say, if you were to grant them this GDP. Your ordinance is quite specific, it's supposed to be complete density, which would mean not just the units that they're showing you, but also...
Mr. Chairman, I should please proceed with the direct examination of the client. In the case, we'll do our closing arguments and our charges, etc.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing that.
This isn't an opportunity to, you know, stake the case or make an argument, please just go back to directly examining the witness.
Then perhaps you shouldn't interrupt the witness about what it is allowing you to work.
Unless the board's perm you or not, I have every responsibility to clarify that, and I think he agreed with what I said, so please proceed with the examination.
I don't think he did agree with you, Mr. Jackson, and I think that there's, the ordinances that governs. Now, Mr. Goll, before you were interrupted, you were talking about whether the buildings could be constructed on this site as something that is, is part of what you did in reviewing this application, am I right?
Yes, but I wasn't talking about architectural or structural components of the building, and the buildings themselves, I was not talking about that.
So can you continue what you were trying to say?
So, in order to fit the 556 units, they need to significantly recreate the site. One of the things I wanted to point the planning board to is my first exhibit that I've, it's basically a retaining walls exhibit. I don't know if you want to...
Are they up, have they, the thumb drive?
Mr. Schneider, should I ask a question? I don't believe we've numbered this exhibit, the only exhibit that we've numbered this evening was the CV, unless this is an earlier exhibit. I don't know what exhibit we're talking about.
I think you had a chance to get there, it was just there's a hint to identify, and then I was going to have, you have provided a PDF, some kind of thumb drive to the board secretary, and what does that PDF contain?
The PDF contains...
Is Mr. Schneider with this?
Eight exhibits, a...
I don't know what it is, so I don't know if I have it, it wasn't given to me. So, Mr. Chairman, can Mr. Schneider get a copy of this?
Yes, of course, Mr. Chairman, but I needed to introduce what it was, and then I was going to try to efficiently present everything.
Let's go.
Well, I think the procedure is for you to identify, ask for a P mark, and of course, if I identify, give a copy to Mr. Schneider, and you should tell us what it is, so we know.
That's what I was about to do, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Board, I have?
I...
Mr. Schneider, do you have copies?
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Schneider, do you have a copy of the document?
I don't have one either.
You want to take this copy, please?
If you give me a chance, I will get it, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, here you go.
Let's slow down, take a breath.
The board has the preference of having certain exhibits marked and put onto the thumb drive. So I wanted to let him, let him describe what was on the thumb drive, show the documents, give the copies of what I have to Mr. Schneider. So, that is the way I was about to go about it, and I...
That's the thing about evidence, though, when you present something to a board, you give a copy of it to your adversary first, so your adversary can look at it, make a determination if they have any objections, and the board considering it at all.
Mr. Jackson, I didn't get there yet, I didn't get there when you interrupted.
This was handed out to the board 10 minutes ago.
I didn't hand it out.
Your professional provided it to me, as well as the drivers, to put it there for some time.
Right.
So, let's just give him a minute.
The thumb drive, that is what your professional asked me to do.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Morris, I was of the understanding that we prefer to have the projection for the...
I was asked if I could present that for you and I.
Thank you very much, because I thought it was very, I really thought it was a great idea.
It is, but let's let Mr. Schneider look through it first to say if he has any objection. So he can at least know what you're about to talk about. Now he knows.
I'm wanting...
Now I do, Jackson gave it today, and at this point, I have no objection.
Okay, so now, what is this item marked as?
There is a group of documents in this, isn't that correct, Mr. Goll?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to ask you to please go through this, and hand my 14-inch set of documents, and identify what they are, and we will then have them marked properly.
Would you like me to list them all?
Yes, one by one, and then we're going to mark them with a number. So the first one on the top of the sheet, what is that called?
The first one is a retaining wall layout.
Okay, so that's D6.
No, I will give D6 to the CD.
I'm sorry, D7, thank you, I'm sorry. D7, okay, what's the next one?
The next one is, is the overall layout with cross-section locations.
D8.
The next one is cross-sections, as identified on the prior cross-section layout.
Thank you.
The next one is a scale, three-dimensional view of a select cross-section B, of existing and proposed sites.
D10, and I forgot to give the numbers on the previous one, so...
Hold on one minute, that is the item that I'm holding up right now. Is that what you're talking about, D10?
That's D10, yes, Mr. Jackson.
And that consists of one, two, three, four views. Please continue.
Okay, let me just make sure, D8, let's just go back to the second document in this set. That's one you identified again, the second document in the set that has blue lines on it.
It's the overall proposed GDP plan with cross-section locations.
That's D8. Okay, now let's go to the next one, so I get them all down, thank you. D9.
The cross-sections, cross-sections, as identified on the prior cross-section layout.
Okay, and now we're up to D10, which is the color...
This is a color through the perspective rendering of cross-section B, as identified on the prior layout.
You said cross-section B, like for what?
Correct.
All right, continue. D11.
The third is a close-up of the southern, or the south, northeastern area of the golf course by the large pond. That shows the existing topographic and property boundaries, and the proposed property boundaries and building layout.
That's D11.
The third is a little long, this is sheet 13 of 48. Preliminary major subdivision, the fairways at Lake Ridge. Creating utilities and drainage plan, last revised July 2nd, 1997. NJDEP permit number 1514-90-0005.5. Plan stamped July 17th, 1997.
D12.
D12, we're going backwards, that was page 13, I think we worked on that.
That was D12, we did that with page 13, had a larger subdivision, so we might have to settle it.
Thank you.
So D12 looks like this?
Yes.
Yes.
And the next one, Mr. Goll?
Okay, just to avoid confusion, this is sheet 3 of 18. Okay, just to avoid confusion, this is sheet 3 of 18, that's not the, sheet 3 of 18, final flat major subdivisions, section 6, the fairways at Lake Ridge, grading utility plan, last revised November 4, 1997, also prepared by Lynch &amp; Giuliani &amp; Associates.
D13.
This is the land use plan prepared by Dynamic Engineering, last revised January 4, 19, 19, or 2019, and it identifies specific lots with front yard setbacks less than the ordinance allows.
Is this, is this...
All right, that last one is D14. This one, do you have one of these sets?
Yes.
Did you have one?
Yes, I got it.
Mr. Schneider, no objection?
Not at this one.
Okay, Mr. Gold, now tell us, let's go down, mark all of these exhibits, and I'd like to go to D7, and tell us what that shows.
D7 is the, is a depiction where we've highlighted the locations of retaining walls. To be clear, this plan view that you're looking at was from the CAPRA application. The layout is nearly identical, other than some changes in front yard setbacks and some other minor details. It essentially shows the site as is. The red highlights are where we were able to find the location of retaining walls that are to be proposed, are proposed to be constructed on this site. When you add all those retaining walls together, it numbers around 20,648 linear feet and 3.91 miles of retaining wall.
This is everything that is red?
That is correct.
Is it exact, because it seems like some of it goes through the property?
These were outlined from the plan.
And he was addressing that, there are concerns about that. So, there's almost 4 miles of retaining walls?
Yes.
Why?
In order to accommodate the homes and construct the site, because of the fact that this was a sand mine, and is a golf course and a closed depression, they needed to raise, they need to raise the elevations, not just to level out the streets and the lots, but also to help, number one, promote drainage, but also to be able to place the number of homes that they have on this site in order to avoid things like the tree save areas or the property boundaries. And so, those are the reasons that they have those structures. The, if you'll notice on some of them, they have these like long little appendages where, for example, on the southernmost or the northeasternmost basin adjacent to the, to the fairways, there's two narrow lines, or two closely spaced lines, those are retaining walls that are built so that somebody can, you know, drop down into the basin to access the basins to maintain them.
Right, now, does the fill also have anything to do with basement apartments?
Yes, in order to also promote drainage and to elevate the buildings and basements above the elevations where the stormwater management features will be, which I'll be showing in a few minutes on the sections, they need to elevate the site in order to be able to raise the buildings and basements out of the, out of potential groundwater conflicts.
And I just wanted to highlight with respect to the one red section that runs along the fairway boundary, that's kind of an elongated section, can you tell me what that is?
That is a stormwater management basin, it is a recharge basin.
And what's the, what's the height of these walls?
Well, that's something I'll get into on the, on the next exhibits.
Okay.
And I'll be able to go into that a little bit more as you tell it.
All right, is it, so is there anything else want to call for attention?
Yes.
With regard to the exhibit D7?
Yes.
Tell me.
So, and again, I know that they, it's been testified that they have not gone into designing the retaining walls, and not a lot of thought went into them, well, in the CAPRA application, a lot of thought went into them. The detail you see on the top left is adapted from the detail of the retaining walls to essentially a typical cross-section of a retaining wall. And to explain, there are certain labels on there. So, the modular block label, which is the gray on the left side of that detail, is something that when you're driving by a modular block wall, is something that you see, it's a, you know, an architecturally looking textured type of feature. The lines that actually extend horizontally to the right are what are called geo-grids. Because those modular blocks are just laying on the face, they can't stand up on their own, you can't just stack them and put soil behind them, it's sort of like if you're familiar with a retaining wall with dead men, this, where they stick a lot behind it and then tie cables like on a bullpen, if anybody's familiar with that. The wall has to utilize the soil behind it in order to make the entire thing one large structure and be structurally sound and not fall. And so, you lay these geotextiles, and these geo-grids, the, basically, the assumption is that the length of those geo-grids are about 80% of the height of the wall, so if you have a 10-foot-high wall, generally, the geo-grid extends 8 feet.
What are they made of?
The geo-grids are actually made out of a high-strength plastic, non-degradable, they basically look like a net, except they're, they're very stiff, they can, they're rollable, but they're very stiff. And what happens is when you have a granular soil that you place between them, they, and there's tension placed on it, once you place the fill in the wall in, there's a little bit of tension that's applied naturally just from the fill compacting and exerting on the face of the wall, the geo-grid actually integrates with the soil, so the microscopic or small little soil particles actually interact with the geo-grid and lock it all into place. So, essentially, while you have a geo-grid, you have a large rectangular cross-section structure of a wall. Good question, thank you. The, on the right of that, you'll see a slope, it's a sloped line with a dark brown in the lower right, and then the fill on top of it. That is generally, now, there's two ways that you can build these walls, you can, you can draw a sheet pile to protect the workers, if anything's over 4 feet in height, you need to provide protection for people in excavation, you can't have vertical heights of walls or the soil will collapse. So, for a granular material, generally, you're dealing with at least a 1 and 1/2 to 1 vertical or a 2 to 1, usually the rule of thumb is getting a 2 to 1 slope, so that as the workers are down there placing the material, it doesn't collapse on them. But again, in lieu of that, you could draw sheeting or do something where it actually retains, it's a temporary retaining structure that constructs those walls. This will become very important in the next plan that I provide, that I show you. So, one of the things that's, that's interesting, it is really, these buildings are the key, and one of the things that is not in my purview is traffic, but one of the things I understand is that the number of homes is really impacting the traffic issues that are of concern. This many homes could not be built if they did not have these retaining walls. If they had to have these retaining walls, if they did not have the retaining walls, they would have had to have more gradual slopes, for example, around the tree save areas which are now proposed to be boxed in with retaining walls, you would have to have sloped areas around the detention basins, which would further knock out more homes. And so, the density of this, or the intensity of this development would be much, much less. So, what you're seeing here is they're really, and that's why I talked about, it's a very manufactured, engineered site, you know, where there's a lot of pieces going on here that are required to put this project together, it's complicated. So, the filling of the site and retaining walls is required, not just to accommodate the homes, but as I stated, to accommodate basements or presumable basement units, as I've, I've listened to the testimony, and they need to elevate it above not only groundwater, but able to accommodate drainage features and get the water to drink positively down to these detention basins.
And just so that is clear, the tree save areas, please describe to the board how they came about and they, how they are protected under the CAP, original CAP rule.
That is an area that is not initially my expertise, but as I understand, the tree save areas are sort of no-fly zones, as an engineer, you have to design it so that if you're not impacting, those tree save areas are supposed to be preserved in perpetuity. And that's why several of the base, there's actually, if you look at the center of this drawing, there's a big blob of a gray tree save area in the center, and you'll notice the detention basins on either, on either side of them, they needed to put in those retaining walls in order to create a separation between the basins and the tree save areas. If there were no tree save areas, or excuse me, if there were no retaining walls, you would see more of a sloped area going up to the homes, or to the detention, or down to the detention basin.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Gold, I might be getting ahead, but I'm inferring from your comments that somehow retaining walls are, are not good, what's the, kind of give me a preview, what's the...
Let's assume there are a ton of retaining walls.
What, so why?
That's a very good question, retaining walls are good, I'm a geotechnical engineer, I design retaining walls.
Okay.
But it's like carrots, you only can eat them in moderation, a lot of retaining walls, if you have 4 miles of retaining walls, this homeowners association or whoever's gonna end up taking care of these retaining walls, are gonna have to make sure that they're maintained in perpetuity. Some of these retaining walls are relatively high, as I'll be discussing, they, you know, people, they're in the backyards of these homes, I'm sure they'll be fenced up as required by code, but also, like any structure, they don't last forever. So, just like pipe, stormwater pipe, the detention basins themselves, even homes, don't have a, an infinite life cycle, at one point, these walls will have to be maintained, and they're pointed up or replaced at one point, depending on how they fare over the years. So, if the typical lifespan of a civil infrastructure type of project like a retaining wall could be anywhere from 50 to 100 years or 80 years, but those walls will still need to be maintained at one point, it's just a lot of walls.
So, I guess, Mr. Snyder, I'm trying to, it helps my bringing, when I assimilate information, to understand what's the point, what are we trying, so is the thrust of these comments that they're gonna be ugly, or that we have to have a regime in place to make sure they're maintained, that they're gonna collapse and somebody's gonna die, what's, what are you gonna end up telling us after, give us all the details?
Well, it'll be something that, and we'll talk about the stormwater basins as well, but it's something that, again, in the long term, you know, 4 mile, almost 4 miles of retaining wall is a lot to maintain. And what I'm saying is though, it's, that with the detention basins, it's, that's how they're meeting their density requirements for this project.
Okay, sorry.
That's quite right, I'm pleased that you're asking these questions, because they go right to the heart of what we wanted to address in terms of criteria for the GDP, the standards and the plan development, and the fact that this is a community that will, I believe it's being presented as having feasible lots, however, what Mr. Gold is trying to point out is that you've got all of these common area requirements, almost 4 miles of, of walls, and they entail expenses, etc., what he's trying to break, which directly leads to the requirements, and the standards and the ordinance for having a homeowners association, having a declaration of covenants and restrictions, there's several provisions about the maintenance.
Mr. Snyder, are you testifying with the issue?
No, I'm not, it's the ordinance, I'm not testifying, I, this is what a witness stated, and I'm responding to the chair's question, Mr. Jackson, thank you, I'm finished, Mr. Jackson.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I wasn't testifying at all, thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving.
Unless the ordinance is testifying.
Let's keep moving. Okay, so, related, somewhat related to the retaining walls, we'll talk a little bit more, just slightly, a little bit more about those in a few minutes, in a minute. I'm going to the next feature, which is the GDP project layout with the cross-section locations.
That, that exhibit, D8.
Correct. That's the one with the blue lines?
The one with the blue line, yes.
That is correct. So, what we wanted to do is shed a little light on the difference, the layout of the project, I know a lot of you have been talking about the concept and plan view in terms of the layout of the lots and what they have to, and how their, how this whole development circulates, but we also wanted to shed a little light on the vertical aspects of this development and what the impacts, as I understand, are concerning in terms of visual, so as an engineer, I'm providing the, the cross-sections and engineering components of the project. So, you'll see on this plan, on the left side, you'll see a blue line all the way on the left called Section A, that is through a proposed detention basin. Section B illustrates the, and it'll show the profile from the fairways development into the proposed development.
What does that mean, profile?
Profile is sort of a cross-section, this is a slice in the ground that you would look at, if you could slice the ground, put a piece of glass up and look at it, you would see basically the cross-section.
Okay.
So, D8 is defining what D9 is gonna tell us?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Section C goes through the proposed basin into the, into the proposed development, and D, Section D shows the cross-section that extends into the detention basin and the tree save area. So, to start with, if you go to the next exhibit...
D9, cross-section.
And this is important, these, when you look at these, one of the things I wanted to point out is when you look at retaining walls and retaining structures, they're not just lines on the paper, there's that depth to them, as we talked about before, where we said there's a geotextile fabric that generally goes 80% into the slope, so a 10-foot-high wall is not a linear line, when you look down at it, it is 8 feet wide. The Section A, that if you look at the top left, you'll see that we overlaid, in this case, the property boundary is coincident with the township line, the township boundary.
And that's the township of, of, of Jackson River, or Jackson?
I believe it's Jackson. When you look at the line on the plan for the retaining wall, it makes sense, it's on the inside of the property, just inside the property.
I just wanted to correct you for a moment, it is Tom's protection.
It is, okay.
Yes, it is.
It's intentional.
Go back to D8.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the correction. The bottom, the below that shows the proposed elevations of the stormwater basin that's to be constructed. In order to facilitate this basin, they need to put a retaining wall, basically almost all, I think all the way around it, just I'll check, it's essentially all the way around it, there's a ramp that goes down into it. If you look at the left side, just below, where it says proposed stormwater basin, on the left side, you'll see different hatching, and you'll also see the township line coincident with the wall. Well, in order to build this 25-foot-high wall next to the basin, they're gonna need 80% of that. So, they're going to need somewhere on the order of 20 foot of width in order to get into, to construct at least the modular block wall that they proposed in their CAPRA application.
And are you saying they don't own that land, or it just has to be over the township line?
As I understand, they don't own that land. Now, they didn't propose what I drew here, I just want to be clear, that's our interpretation, if you're going with what they proposed is modular block... If you're going with what they proposed as modular block walls, in order to construct them, they're gonna have to extend out onto the, across the property boundary.
And that looks like a residential development, they are residential lots?
There's a triangular piece on the end of it, I will admit, you could potentially, you'll see where it's called limit of excavation, they could potentially drive sheeting to protect the workers and build that wall. However, regardless, the main structure of that wall, if they were to build a modular block wall, would extend off the property based on the drawing layout they had.
So Mr. Goll, the first exhibit here, is it D eight? D eight?
With the ground wall in the front or the, the set?
Yeah, the D seven was, was put together by the applicant.
Mr. Boy, you want to answer the?
Who, who made this?
Well, the, the underlying plan was prepared by the applicant's engineer.
Okay.
We did this. We prepared that, based on interpretations of, I have.
So this is your interpretation, that's what?
Well, it's, it's, it's not an interpretation, it's, well, the elevation.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's, no, it's, what I'm saying is the elevations that we proposed are based on their existing condition survey and their proposed elevations on their project.
Got it.
So that's what we prepared. My interpretation is the width of that retaining wall that will be required, so, my professional opinion. Okay. So you're dealing with a twenty-five-foot-high wall. How high are the walls in this room? Do you guys know? Maybe eighteen, no? The wall will be somewhere higher, seven feet higher than that, if that's the height of the wall, I had a guess. Okay, so, moving along to section B.
I'm the same, D nine?
Yes, I'll see, nine, what is it, B nine?
D nine, David.
D nine, excuse me, yep, D nine. That's just to the right. You will see that there's an existing, they have the existing golf, the existing golf course on the rooftop, they have the rectangle on the top right represents the home on the fairways property. And what we've shown is the fairways open space width on their property. And on the left side is the seventy-five perimeter, splits perimeter setback required per ordinance. The fill that they would be required to bring this up to grade, and I'm gonna show a depiction of what that may look like, is about thirteen feet. So behind these homes in section B, they're gonna bring the ground surface that exists there now and place thirteen feet of fill. And then place the house on top of that and roads and parking and things like that. So that the hatching you see is the actual areas that they need to fill. As you move to the left, you will see another retaining wall structure that's required, an excavation for that retaining wall structure, and then bringing it up and into another stormwater feature on the other side. Section C illustrates, as you'll see on the, if you go to the prior plan, it goes from the fairways development into, across the detention basin that's proposed, or the recharge basin that's proposed, and shows the proposed homes and the, going across and showing another basin that's all the way on the left based on that cross-section. One of the things I want to note, and again, just as I, I pointed out in section A, you have a, a, a retaining wall here, that when you construct that retaining wall, and I believe that one may be thirteen feet high, when you construct that retaining wall, if you build a modular block-type wall as was proposed during the cap or permit application, you will extend it onto the fairways property. The section D is interesting because we wanted to not only show the detention basin or the, the impact of fills and homes, but on the left, I'll point out an odd place on the plan layout with a retaining wall. So you've got the, on the right, you've got the home, a typical home on that cross-section, that would be for the fairways at Lake Bridge, the fairways open space, you've got the seventy-five foot perimeter setback, you've got, and that's gonna require to build that home ten feet of fill, so they elevate that area ten feet. You have the home across the street, and then going to, continuing to the left, there's a proposed stormwater basin. Now, we reviewed the existing grades and the proposed elevations of the stormwater basin, and when you look at the retaining wall, and I welcome the applicant to correct this, if we misinterpreted this, there's essentially just a wall sticking up out of the ground, we estimate about five feet. So there seems to be some kind of, the, the bottom of the basin appears to be proposed at the same elevation as the tree safe area to the left. So we're not exactly sure if, if that's just built as a barrier to protect the tree safe area, maybe it'll be some kind of drip pile or some, something like that, or it may have been unintended, but if you don't have that wall, based on those elevations, you'll have the water flowing from that stormwater basin into the tree safe area, which, as we stated before, is a no-fly zone, can't do anything or discharge it. Does everybody?
Now, can you, everybody, is it all clear so far? Okay, I just wanted to ask you something. The wall heights, you said they go, there's, what's the highest wall height, is there any, anything higher than twenty feet?
Twenty-five feet, the.
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and they have varying heights then throughout?
Yes, they vary from one foot to twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Mr. Nono, before the hearing, was D nine given to Mr. Snyder?
He has the whole pack, Mr. Sturrock.
Be like via email or something? No, now.
No, no, I think, no.
Okay, so you had, this is the first time they've had a chance to see this too?
Yeah, just as, well, we can't do the first, we think, the first time we had to see it. I don't, yeah.
No, no, just, just trying to clarify.
I didn't just, I don't just, I didn't just take it in here.
Okay.
We had a hard enough time getting you ready for tonight.
All right, so the next, the next exhibit, which is?
D ten, the color exhibit, the four colors reading respective.
That is correct. We took the grades that we, from the existing conditions and they proposed grading, again, albeit from the cap or plan, although the layout doesn't change much, although we adjusted it for the, the new home, where they shifted the homes toward the road, because on a number of homes, and I'll show on the plan, later on the plans, where they proposed parking in the rear yards of the home within the seventy-five-foot perimeter boundary setback. Based on, based on the allowable number of, there's essentially four units per building, two units that are above ground, two below that could potentially be built, and as I understand, unlikely to be built based on the types of construction that goes on locally. You'd need about ten parking spaces for those areas, and this illustrates, so let me just be clear, so on the top left, what you're looking at is a, on the, is both a before and after, the after is above, you'll see on the before below, it's not labeled before, but that's a home on the lake, the, on the fairways property, and right now, they look out onto the golf course. So if you look at the photograph on the right, that's about what they're looking at. It's a nice preview. Above that is the new homes that will be constructed, or proposed to be constructed, and the driveways that will be, are placed on those. And most of the homes adjacent to the fairways, the parking areas and the driveways, those structural elements of the driveway are behind the home.
Now, I thought the seventy-five-foot perimeter buffer prohibited structures other than walls and signs and the houses?
That is correct.
So they're putting parking lots in the backyard adjacent to the fairways to help?
Correct, and those I'll go through later on another exhibit. It's apparent that they were, while trying to respect the seventy-five-foot perimeter boundary setback, they needed to push these homes closer to the road, which then reduced the front yard setbacks from the minimum twenty feet to, in some cases, I scale off the plans, ten or eleven or twelve feet.
So the, the houses don't meet front, many of the houses don't meet front yard setbacks, you're gonna get into that?
I'll, I'll talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially, regarding the seventy-five feet, that's presumably something cap would have repined about, right?
No, that's not in the local ordinance, Mr. Sturrock.
So the gentleman, I mean, these are all to scale, the gentleman, as I understand, is a five-foot-nine average height person, and those are minivans, although I don't know why some of them get ten, same color, but nonetheless, that's the view of, that will be the view from, potentially, potentially the view from a rear yard as well.
And a parking lot is a structure?
Oh, yeah, well, asphalt pavement is a structure, it's made to support vehicles.
You want to clarify that made to support?
Oh, it's made to support, like, vehicles and it's made to hold up, yeah, vehicles. Trying to think of that word. So one of the things I wanted to do is I also, and not just, and, and basically, I'm trying to show, essentially, give you a little, the basis for going through the ordinance for the general development plan as well as the plan unit development standards. The plans, the, the GDP plans, in a number of instances, you comply with, for example, scales and things like that. So the size of the plan, one of the things that were, we noticed were missing, that they don't have the total non-residential floor areas, which they could not find them, as well as the total density. And they also excluded, unless there's any kind of basement apartments as, as I understand. Going down on B five of the GDP ordinance, the stormwater management plan setting forth the proposed method of controlling and managing stormwater on site, there are no details for the stormwater drainage system, no details for the routing and sizing of the inlets and the piping networks. There are no location identified in evidence of the bottom of the infiltrative surface to seasonal high groundwater for the five hundred and fifty-six seepage pits to be constructed.
Can I just stop you for a minute? Five hundred and fifty-six seepage pits. So do you have any, can you kind of describe for us what size these things are and what they are supposed to do?
As I stated before, the, the seepage pits on this project are proposed to collect roof runoff that's allowed, you, as long as the runoff is clean, it can be directed right to a seepage pit for recharge without having to be treated beforehand. The seepage pits, their dimensions and depths can vary, they're usually, they're circular, they have formed holes on the sides of them to allow the water to go out to the sides and infiltrate into the ground. They vary in dimension from six to, you know, I've seen them as ten feet, ten feet in diameter for residential purposes, but they can also be as deep as ten or fifteen feet, depending on the requirement for this, for the specific site.
So the seepage pits are part of the stormwater management plan?
That's correct, the applicant is, is utilizing those seepage pits in order to conform to the stormwater management regulations.
Okay, and, so, but they're not shown on what you see or saw in this general development plan application?
No, they're describing the stormwater management, the GDP stormwater management report that was submitted.
But there's no plan? Like, you don't see them?
No, there's no plan, no, there's no plans.
Okay, thank you.
So these, these seepage pits, as you stated, there's no, I didn't see any stormwater management plan outlining who or what entities will be responsible for them, will there be easements or access, you know, the ability for the municipality if need be. One of the things I want to back up a little bit is, every municipality has what's called an MS four permit, a municipal separate stormwater system permit, usually signed by the head political person in the, in the municipality, the mayor, the, the committee chair. And they are responsible for, even though stormwater facilities can be on private property, they are still responsible for the enforcement, maintenance and upkeep of those basins. In the event a, for example, homeowners, homeowners organization does not take care of these basins and they fall out of compliance and nothing is done, the D E P could come in with enforcement and make those items be taken care of. So it's, it's an obligation of the municipality to make sure that the developer, as I'm sure you guys, the planning board has been through before, there'll be requirements for maintenance and maintenance plans and access easements or something that is gonna allow the municipality, if they need to, go in and inspect each and every one of these five hundred and fifty-six seepage pits. There's a manhole cover usually on them, you can open them, stick your head down, flashlight, take a look and see if they're draining, so, do that five hundred and fifty-six times. Okay, so each of the homes, they're gonna have their own dry well, each of the, you know, at least the above-ground units, that's just based on the, the applicant is just proposing them for the above-ground units. So, that's.
What do you mean therefore, they get above-ground units?
Well, the applicant basically stated therefore, there'll be one seepage pit per, per unit of the five hundred and fifty-six units.
Per unit?
Correct.
So are they having four seepage pits per building?
No, I assumed it was two per building.
You didn't count the basins?
Well, it wouldn't make sense, it's physically not, it's not a, a use issue, it's, you know, you put it, you want it, it's, you're really just dealing with the roof.
So once the roof is accommodated, it really doesn't matter, I mean, you need to have the same amount of water coming down to that size?
Correct.
And I'm just asking this question, does the surface area where the, the seepage pit is, the surface area on top of where the pit is, does that area need to be protected in any way?
Where the seepage pit is?
Yes.
No, I mean, it's usually the top of it's probably a foot below grade at least, you know, buried, and then there's a manhole extension that may come up, that does come up so that they can do inspections or have an inspection port. I mean, you could theoretically pave over one as long as below it is, you know, it has the right infiltrative surface.
And, and what, it connects like a leader?
Yeah, leaders from the.
And the leaders that go straight.
Mr. Nono, sorry, it's exclusively for rainwater?
Correct.
But the municipality could be responsible for these five hundred and fifty-six?
Well, they essentially are.
They are responsible.
They can, they can require the homeowners association or the homeowners on the lots and force the homeowners to maintain them, but it's ultimately, it goes up to the municipality. And then ultimately, it's the state who has to answer to EPA.
Thank you.
Okay, the basins, the base, this site, because it's, even though they're regrading, there's a site and trying to level it off a little bit with the retaining walls, they still have dead ends for these detention basins, or these, this site. It's basically, for the most part, closed depression. I think there are some areas where they're proposing that the, the surface water flows off-site, but for the most part, everything is going to be draining to these recharge basins where it'll be proposed to recharge that water into the ground and up to and including the one-hundred-year storm event as required. And I, I know I've heard it before during these testimonies, I'm not who, I'm not sure who said it, it was questioned that, you know, what happens if these basins fail, which they can, I mean, technically, basins over time, if they're not clogging, they're not doing their job, they usually, you know, they're putting sand surface on the top so that it, it filters pollutants out and so eventually they have to be maintained. But in the event, sometimes during construction or during, even over time, these basins can slow down, depending on the design, if you agree with groundwater elevations on the site, you know, or not, the groundwater can impact the ability of the, of these basins to recharge if the groundwater's up. The closer it is to the basin bottom, the harder it is for the water to infiltrate because it has to hit the groundwater surface and then it's. the water to infiltrate because it has to hit the groundwater surface and then it's, what's discussed is a mounding where the water actually rises up because it takes some time for the aquifer to accept the, the stormwater infiltration.
So let me understand something, the basins that are proposed in this site, they all rely on groundwater recharge?
I believe there's certain sections on the perimeter that may go off-site, I'm not, I'm not recalling, but predominantly, all of the stormwater runoff goes to eventually recharge basins.
Okay, and is there any redundancy that built into this system that you looked at?
Well, given the example, we designed actually a project in South Jersey for NJAC Insurance for their Southern New Jersey facility, we, there were eight, I think it was eight recharge basins, they were in a similar situation, they actually constructed their site in an old sand mine, and there was a slight difference here, is there was an ability all the way at the end of the project to potentially, to guide flow if the basins failed, so the township engineer when we were, or the city engineer, excuse me, town of Hamilton engineer, they said, well, what if these basins fail, where's the water going to go? So we had to create a plan that showed directional areas where the water was going to flow over land and provide grading that would allow and facilitate that water if the basin were to fail, fill up, not infiltrate anymore, overflow and go over the land, provide those, I'll call it a fail-safely, urgency type of spillway situation as well.
So I may ask you about redundancy, so, your response was, is that redundancy, so I can understand it, but that means that there's another way to resolve the groundwater other than in the primary basin?
Yeah, the best way is to have multiple routes for groundwater to, or, excuse me, for stormwater to go in the event one component of the system fails.
And so my simple, non-engineering mind also can understand, if the groundwater is up here, you can't drain water into the groundwater because that's no place to go, I guess that's-
Well, it, it does, if it infiltrates, it's just, it goes at a different rate because it's not driven by the porosity or the, the openings in between the soil particles, it's then dictated by which, the, the ability of the aquifer to, the, basically the distortivity, basically the ability of that aquifer to convey that water, usually laterally, in the aquifer.
So, but you have time to the year, you have times of the year when the groundwater is higher, right, you have seasonally high water?
Yes.
So, and if you design a basin, do you need to know when the seasonal high water is, is up?
Yes, you would normally design this for the highest seasonal, or the seasonal, the highest seasonal, or the highest groundwater elevation of the season, usually in the winter.
Okay, have you seen anything that helped you to decide, to determine whether or not the design of this stormwater system has taken into account the seasonal high water?
There was a lot of recharge, our soil investigations on this site, I think in our CAFR application, we pointed out a number of different, what we felt were deficiencies for meeting the best management practice manual, appendix D for groundwater infiltration, I believe the applicant has provided additional information to be, to be frank, I have not looked that closely at the, the soils data that they've provided on the plans.
But it's something that, in your opinion, as an engineer, should you look at in connection with the stormwater management requirement for a general development plan, I think, with you?
Correct, and one of the main concerns, and I, there were photographs that were presented, and I'd actually been out to the site and overview, taken an overview look at the site, is the fact those existing ponds overtop, and recently, they've been overtopping significantly and have been pumped, there's been pumping from those, some of the areas that have been flooding back to the ponds to try to alleviate the flooding issue. From observation, this, as I stated before, groundwater's right about at the elevation of the, the ponds that are there. I know the, during the CAFR application process, there was a claim, I think by maybe one of the attorneys for the, for the applicant, that they felt that the ponds were lined, but nobody was able to provide any type of evidence other than the mention of this from the applicant's attorney, that there was a lining of those ponds, but frankly, those ponds, the groundwater elevation seemed to align with what the regional groundwater elevations would be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donato.
Okay, so, we talked about redundancy, and one of the things that is, was mentioned, I think somewhere in the hearings, I don't know who said it, but they talked about, well, you know, we designed these things, we designed a building, we live in buildings, and if we were worried about buildings failing, would we, would there be an issue? Well, the issue when you build a structure and, is that there's redundancy, you know, a beam fails or a column fails, the loads can be redistributed to other areas, and so that's what we call redundancy, similar to what I talked about where the basin can overflow and go somewhere else. This site has no redundancy, if the basin were to fail, or the basins were to fail, they would have nowhere to go other than basically back up and up, and back up into the, I don't know what the impacts might be for, from the homes, but it would be also, if they started to fail, a significant maintenance headache and cost expense for the, for the community to pay for.
So is redundancy best practice, or is that a requirement, or does that fall? Is redundancy a requirement?
Let me say, and I want to describe it in how a stormwater basin is normally designed. A stormwater basin, you have, you basically design a stormwater basin to collect the stormwater, hold it for a certain, and I'm talking just about for quantity and flooding, hold it for a certain amount of time, and then slowly release it to mimic the pre-development conditions. Most ordinances and I have what are called the requirements for emergency spillways, redundancy, if, for example, an orifice in a concrete structure that's controlling the flow out gets clogged, and the basin starts to fill up, it goes through this emergency spillway so that it can safely convey the water over the embankment and in a direction that is not going to provide harm to other properties, life of properties, in this case, we're in a hole. And so-
Is there a, what are our ordinances, I have no idea.
Actually, to be honest with you, I'm not, I don't recall.
Chairman?
Well-
The township uses the State School of Water Ordinance, which is-
Which says?
...set in Golden Age.
Which says?
...layout criteria for design and maintenance. I look at it, this meeting, if they go forward with order law disapplication, and they implement a stormwater system, either they have to use the township rule, which I don't expect is going to happen, or they're going to have to develop a stormwater maintenance plan, which meets the requirements of NJAC's seven culminating, that is going to identify how the basins are going to be maintained, in this case, most likely by a future HOA. Now, just talking about basin types, I don't want to get too far into this, we don't have a design, but I think what the gentleman is talking about, what you expect to, an overflow structure of a pipe, you're talking about a detention basin, is that correct?
Yes, but also, as I, similar to this and the developing, the application, or the project we designed in a similar environment, we didn't have any kind of an outfall structure, but essentially, the ground, the soil, when you're, when you're relying on, upon groundwater recharge solely, that's your outfall structure, that's your gearing, that's what's putting it into the ground, and then, and that's why we were required on that one application to have it alternated, if it all of a sudden stopped working, for some reason, clogged, somebody threw something in there, clogged it up, it would-
If, if, if this gets to a point of future design that we all look at, that is public information, that everyone, including the UPA's, will have it, that's certainly an option in the case of a recharge basin. Another method is to, to build in ways of ensuring the maintenance of the basins will be perfectly, that may include something now, that's terrifying, basically, if you get set in the building or the bottom, that begins to reduce the flood. There are methods that are outlined in NJAC's seven culminating from the maintenance, and that, that is what we use to go, and that's what the state is telling us to use, I believe that's what DEP used to go per review of the CAFR.
Sorry to interrupt, this is, just turning the corner. And I completely agree, and I also understand how diligent homeowners associations can be with the maintenance of their basin, and I'm being a little sarcastic because a lot of times, we get involved in projects where it's, a lot, this is a lot to maintain, is a lot to maintain.
Yeah, I have a question, Terry, you keep saying that the, the actual stormwater management system has not been designed yet, yet, only him saying that he got information from drawings that depict what the stormwater manager was going to look at.
What we have reviewed, that's submitted to the board, is the general development, not, the general development plan documents, that's what we're looking at. I believe what the gentleman is referring to is the set of CAFR design documents, is that correct?
Uh, yes. And also, the, they did submit a GDP stormwater report.
All right, but you're referring to design information, I assume, that's not part of this GDP?
I also resume the GDP stormwater, I mean, it's, they're essentially the same report except they took out all the routing information.
What the GDP talks about, again, the language in the, the UPA, as well as the NMLU, that's virtually a subsection of the NMLU, stormwater management plan setting forth the proposed method of controlling and managing stormwater, but the applicant's saying, okay, we intend to do this by a series of infiltration basins, they're telling you what they intend to do without doing the part of design because the part of engineering, along the grid, everything that, that would go into a stormwater plan has not been done yet, if and when we get a subdivision design or a site by design, that is an entirely different level of design for NJAC's seven culminating than what is required now as part of the GDP process.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Voight, Mr. Voight, if the applicant comes back at the later time, where more detailed plans are submitted at the, at the actual subdivision, that, that will require approval, correct?
Yes.
They'll have to go before the board, and at that point, you'll scrutinize it. What happens if, when you scrutinize the plans, you determine that the geo-brids are extending into the adjacent properties, or that the stormwater management system lacks sufficient capacity or whatever, what would happen to that?
We would recommend design changes if we were not comfortable with the design. Now, the case that was brought up about the geo-brid earlier, that may be absolutely true, I don't know if the applicants will defend or not, assuming it's true that they have not factored in that they have to have the tiebacks of the UPA go off-site, if they were to try and ignore that design, they would have to get the adjacent town approval, there would have to be some form of construction.
Or they would have to modify-
Or they would have to modify the design. The township may, may come back if they tried that and said, no, I'm going to give you whatever agreement you need to implement your design, in that case, they would have to make the changes.
So, okay.
So then, isn't this scrutiny moot at this point, it's not the final design?
They're, they're all valid concerns, I, I'm not debating any things being brought-
I'm not either.
They don't have the design document.
I'm not either debating any, any issues that he's brought up, but if this is not the final-
I, I would not say that they are not relevant, I would not say that they are moot, I would say that the board can certainly take that into consideration, determining the feasibility of your overall plan, but just keep in mind that this is not intended to be a final design, or other-
I just said, I just, I don't, we can take into consideration that this isn't the final design.
Well, I, I suspect where they're going is, they're saying, you're going to have 25-foot walls, you're going to have to consider where they should be maintained, that goes the overall-
So if we, you know, if, if the board did find, in favor of the application, and 556 homes were approved, and then, you know, they came back with an actual application that didn't allow for 556 homes, then it wouldn't allow for it?
No, that, that, they would have the general development plan, but that gives them some latitude to make some modifications, and if they had to reduce the number of units, they could do that, would be able to increase it.
Okay, but as long as the stormwater drainage would work.
Right, and that will be scrutinized at that time, and it would all have to work, but I, I suspect what they point at this one is, there's, there's a lot of unique parts here, and you could look at this as the integrity of the overall plan, and whether it's a good plan, I'm paraphrasing, but that's, I think that's a fair take, but just keep in mind, now, this will all be looked at in detail at the appropriate time, the applicant's testimony was with, this is a general development plan, I called it a view from 10,000 feet earlier, and, and when they have to do the actual designs and, and, you know, do all calculations, that, that's, you know, that'll be scrutinized at that time, they haven't done all of it.
Terry, what would I-
Can I say something else, Terry? I have a copy of the CAFR document that was issued for this project.
And did some of your plans, Terry?
And I'm just looking at standard condition 15, they have a statement that sets the department or the P, now, this is based on the review of the CAFR documents, which are not exactly this, but the statement says, the department has determined that this project meets the requirements of stormwater manageable at NJAC seven culminating, any future expansion or alteration of the approved stormwater management system, which would affect water quality, increase the rate of volume of stormwater to the site, affect the infiltration capacity on the site, or alter the approved low-impact site design, shall be reviewed and approved in writing by the department prior to any construction. This includes, but is limited to, any proposed changes to the discharge characteristics of any basin, the construction of new inlets or pipes that tie in stormwater, the storm sewer network, excuse me, and the replacement of existing inlet or pipes with structures of different capacity. The way that I read this is, if they come back with future design, not only is this subject to the board review and our review, the statement is about the graphics.
So Terry, what would you suggest, does, I think everybody here says we're not down into the nitty-gritty of designing storm retention basins right now, and I think also everybody agrees, we're not just saying, looks good to us, let's keep moving, is there a bright line as it relates to the stormwater management issue in particular, that you would give the board to say, look, this is relevant, you need to drill down, this is not relevant, you're getting lost in the details?
I don't know if I can really say that, I think some of the specificity that's being brought up at this stage, the comments are valid, the scrutiny may be premature until we get design documents. If, if we get design documents that do not address these concerns, yes, we don't have that.
But what should we be looking at?
According to the MLUL for file general development plan, you should be looking at stormwater management plan, setting forth the proposed method of controlling and managing stormwater, the DEP does need to provide a rating of the activity.
Okay, all right. This is another question.
Yes, and, and the, the, as the MLUL, as Mr. Voight pointed out, there's also section 18, damage 606, which is your ordinance general development plan requirements, there's several sections of that ordinance which do, do indicate that you have to have a utility plan with drainage facilities necessitated by the physical characteristics of the site, that's what this witness is addressing, drainage facilities necessitated by the physical characteristics of the site. There, there is also a, you know, as Mr. Voight read, stormwater management, there's also the environmental, there's a number of factors, and I think we cannot discount the fact that this is, they're going, they're asking to be vested with the approval to build a certain number of units. If you grant the GDP approval, they have vested rights to that number of units.
But subject to other restrictions?
Subject to other restrictions and-
That's not what the statute says, Mr. Donato, this is the overall development, that's your remaining units you get to have, that's what it says in the statute, that's what it says, they get vested with the number of units they collect, and then you've got to figure out what to do in the future when you've given them approval and you don't have a stormwater management plan that the GDP will use to call.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to interpose an objection, I haven't been objecting to questions that are asked of the witness, or, you know, questions where they ask, comments towards professional mind have, but these speeches by Ms. Donato, that's not examination of the witness, and unless I'm permitted to stand up after each speech, I, I think you should direct it to question the witness- And unless I'm permitted to stand up after each speech, I think you should direct it to question the witness, not to give little speeches. You know, if that's appropriate when both of us have an opportunity to sum off at the end of the case, but not to use the time that's supposed to be questioning a witness to make little speeches.
Mr. Donato, I want you to speak, and then I want you to respond. We'll resolve this issue, it's eight o'clock, we've been going for two hours, and then take a five-minute break.
Okay, with respect to why I raise it, it's because you, Mr. Chairman, you were asking Mr. Boat questions. He went into what the ordinance requires and the idea that what will happen in the future are in the details. And it's all part and parcel of what's in your ordinance. It's not a speech, it's a reference to the ordinance that applies to your decision.
The only comment I have is that, you know, you're going to take comments from your professionals, and that doesn't, should not open an opportunity to give an opening or summation related to that. But you do have to give the attorneys some latitude to comment upon, you know, what I might say or what Mr. Boat said. I think so far it hasn't gotten out of hand. So let's go, let's continue with the witness. We're going to take a break, though. We're going to take, it's eight o'clock, we've been going for two hours. So we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll get some data.
It would really, 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 really be nice if we could finish up your witnesses by 10:00. Really be nice if we could have the public speak next meeting, but that's just, again, an aspirational goal. The summer is here, and it would be, so I want you to vet everything. Mr. Schneider, have some time, but it would be really, really very excellent for the people of Lincoln if you could finish up your witnesses and cross-examination so next meeting the public can speak, because I want to hear what they have to say.
I appreciate that. And I think that they also want to hear what our witnesses have to say, so we'll see you all go.
Carried very nicely.
Okay, so, Mr. Boat, we were leaving off about this issue of redundancy and the stormwater plan. So you want to pick up, let's see, with regard to some other aspects of the...
One of the things I wanted to know, it was an interesting conversation or discussion before, and I know you're right, I mean, there's, there's, things may be moved, changes may be made to the plans, but what you need to understand too is, this plan pretty much fits as much as they possibly can on this study. If you shift a wall, or shift a base, or change its size, it's going to impact dozens, dozens of homes. So it's not 556 units, it's going to be, it's a lot. And we'll, and we'll actually, I'm going to, if you look at some of the reasons they put the retainers right to the property numbers, they didn't waste, there was no space wasted on this site in terms of engineering structures and putting the homes that are proposed on here. So it's about as much as you're ever going to fit, it's just going to be a lot less if these things are removed. I just wanted to, you know, follow up with the conversation there. So let me, let me, let me move to the next part. One of the things in our analysis, actually, that we never really picked up on the caper review, but we, in reviewing the G D P and the plans, and reviewing the existing site conditions survey, that was on topographic boundary survey, we noticed a 48-inch diameter pipe that comes currently from the fairways development, community development, and I'm sorry, I'm going to the next, the next...
Okay, so I'm going to show you document, I want you to peek at me. Do you want to identify that?
Uh, well, that's, yeah, that's...
Is that what you've got on your mind, you're, you're on one yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not this.
You're on D 12, Terry?
D 11.
It's still D 11.
Okay.
So we're at D 11, and it shows the existing topographic map and boundary survey and proposed conditions of the plans. This is the caper-based plans to show the layout without the, moving some of the homes to comply with setbacks. In reviewing the existing condition plan, you notice there's a 48-inch diameter pipe that goes from the fairways based on the inverts. The fairways development into, into the pond, the large pond that's on the, I always get a little, I think it's on the eastern side of the, of the golf course. The survey stops, it says storm manhole, you'll see on the top, existing conditions. It says rim 90.91, invert 79.46, invert out 77.0. that says rim 90.91, invert 79.46, invert out 77.07, and then there's another storm manhole with another elevation with a rim of 90.3, and they were unable to open it. So, the survey essentially stopped there.
Right, let me make sure that I understand something, so we're looking at D-11?
Correct.
And there's like a double dashed line, right?
Correct.
Is that what you're looking at right now?
Yes.
So, where it says layers and section?
That's where the pipe discharges into the pond.
That, that discharges from the, the, okay, so the stormy manhole area travels across and then goes down into the pond?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. If you look below, and it's a little harder to see, but you'll see, on the proposed conditions of the plant, which really doesn't change on the GDP, so the home locations, the pipe actually is cut off just across the property boundary, connects to a manhole, and then is allowed to discharge into the proposed basin C system. And I say C system, if you recall, there's a basin C2 here adjacent to the property boundary, but they're hydraulically connected and they can go to all the different basins depending on, on the flow, or the elevation of the water. So, I started looking into that, saying, why would there be a four-foot diameter pipe? That's a lot of water, that would have to be conveyed through that system. Normally, when you're doing street stormwater design, you know, you're dealing with anything from 18 inches to, you know, maybe 24, 36 maybe, but four foot's a pretty big pipe once you start. That means you're probably collecting a lot of water, and from a larger area.
Now, if this pipe, this four-foot pipe, is coming out of the fairways property, the fairways development?
According to the survey, yes.
Okay.
According to the survey, from the applicants engineer, well, the surveyor for the applicants, that's where the pipe is going from the fairways community into the pond of the golf course.
So, the pipe goes underground, underground?
Yeah, the stormwater pipes are underground, so when you ever see catch basins in the street, you know, the grades and the water goes in the ground, they follow a different pipe network and to convey the water safely to, or quickly to a stormwater feature or discharge location.
Okay.
Okay? So, in looking a little deeper into the plan, and I'm going to go to the next exhibit...
D-11, D-12?
Yes. Is, we reviewed two different types of plans, so is that, you're saying this is, which one, D?
D-12, is sheet 13 and 48 preliminary fairways, graded 1997, and the T.P. permit, and I can kind of abbreviate.
And then you're going to also, I'm going to talk about the next exhibit, which is sheet 3 of 18, I'm assuming that's D-14?
D-13.
Oh, D-13, that's the next one. D-12, then, is the prior one?
Yes.
Okay. So, D-12, we're...
At the yellow line.
Correct, both of, that's, that's correct. Both of these plans were prepared by a company called Lynch, Giuliani Associates, back in 1996 and 97, and apparently they first applied for a permit from the TEP during their preliminary major subdivision plan, and you'll notice the highlighted plan, so you'll see there's two lines. The one on the left is actually just a blown-up version of the one on the right. The table to the top, right, describes the elevational inverts of the different manholes that are described on the, the plan, we just simply copied it and retyped it. What I did is I went to the report that was prepared by Lynch, Giuliani Associates, and you might want to enter this as an exhibit.
Okay, so you refer to the report of Lynch, Giuliani Associates, dated December 2nd, 1896, preliminary stormwater management reporting drainage calculations for Lake Ridge North, Lake Ridge Township, New Jersey.
That is correct.
Okay, so, please, why?
Thank you.
I only have one copy, know where you want me to bring it from? Okay, for now, I'll just, this is my file, that could be used. All right. I want to make sure that, that report, I want to just get it admitted, this, that report, what the report...
Should I go with this?
No, no, I've just gotten it, but I see what it is.
Do you have any objection?
I have no objection.
Okay, so, the, the, the report describes the, the original design of the fairways community project, and as you'll see, we'll talk about it, truly, the community, the fairways community as well as the golf course are components of it, and, one of the things I want to read, I think it's on, excuse me for a second, I'll link it to the page.
While you're looking, I don't know if you got it better, that's not the D-15.
D-15, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, actually, they're not numbered, but if you go to the page, it says basins number seven, eight, number eight, and number nine. It says the outflow from basin seven, which is just upstreamer to the top of this, the basin that you see here that's labeled detention basin eight, the outflow from number seven, basin number seven flows into number eight. The outflow from basin number eight flows into basin number nine and the golf course recharge area. And then you go a little further, the overflow structure located in basin number eight allows only the peak flows from the 10 and 100-year storms to be diverted to the recharge area in the golf course. I looked at the, if you review the report, the total drainage area that goes to detention basin number eight is, is about 368 acres. When you look at the inverts in this, this pipe network, so when you look at this pipe network, it's actually pretty interesting, the control elevation of your preliminary plan set the elevation at, where's the flare-in section?
Three.
At 82, at 82, and so, any water, according to this drawing, that would go above that elevation, 82, flowed then toward the golf course, through that, there's a four-foot diameter pipe, it connects to two graded inlets on the street that collect other surface water, and then go toward the golf course. The next exhibit is an updated plan...
No, you said the next exhibit, you mean D-13?
Yes, D-13, is by, also by Lynch, Giuliano, and prepared, basically, sheet 3 of 18, final plaque, major subdivision, section six, this was built in sections and phases, the fairways at Lake Ridge, grading and utility plan, last revised November 4th, 1997. Now, this one, the drainage from the road, the pipe networks actually drain toward basin number eight, so they lower the flare-in section of that to make sure that all the flow from the road, instead of going to the golf course, goes into detention basin number eight. However, when you get to catch basin 6-4, on the left side of Skyline Drive, it now drains in the opposite direction toward the golf course. The elevation of the invert at that, at that point is elevation 82, the same controlled elevation as in the preliminary plan that was approved by the EDP. When you look at the, again, the prior plan of the elevation of the 100-year storm elevation, it says 100-year WSEL, water surface elevation, equals 85.62, so we have an invert of 82, when the 100-year flow comes, you have...
Mr. Gold, what's an invert?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I need to get out there. An invert is the, the elevation of the bottom of the pipe, so, when you're trying to figure out grades and directions of flow, we talk about inverts, so if I have a round pipe, it's the bottom elevation of that pipe, and the inverts are identified in connections between the pipes, so that when it's constructed, they know what elevation to build it to, to make sure they replicate your, what you've modeled is, is the flow of the storm.
Does the bottom of the pipe?
The bottom of the pipe.
Okay.
So, or could be the bottom of a, of anything, of a system, any kind of element of a system. So, what happens is this pipe splits, it flows, some of it flows toward the basin, basin number eight on the fairway, some of it flows toward, it only flows toward the golf course, though, when it reaches elevation 82, for, according to the report, for the 10 and 100 year storm events, we assume that it's a 10 and 100 years by 10 through 100 year storm events on this golf course, so that, in other words, if we're at elevate, if the water surface elevation goes to, as I stated, 85.62, that means there's 3.62 feet above the invert that is controlling, so any water above that elevation, now, some of it goes to the golf course, through the four-foot pipe, and some of it goes downstream to the main outlet of the detention basin. So, a lot of water is going into the golf course at that point. And so, what they talk about in this report is they call it an overflow, they call it an overflow pipe or overflow. What that is, is to me, it's, it's an emergency spillway, it's a way to relieve the water because they, they're trying to reduce the water going downstream and sending some of it to the golf course. Why they did it, I'm not sure, frankly, but you can see obviously, based on what they state in the report, and what they have on the plan, is, is the intended use to divert the, a good amount of water to the golf, that's why I said the, the pipe, that's to make sure it can convey enough water to comply with their whatever stormwater calculations they prepare. So, what, and the reason I bring this up is now we have this 48-inch pipe that goes into the golf course, that essentially is stormwater generated from the fairways. So, the fairways and the golf course are inextricably tied together now, based on this stormwater pipe. When Lynch, Giuliani designed this stormwater system, apparently they assumed that these, the golf course and the fairways development was one development, otherwise you don't, as an engineer, divert water to them. Can I extend your closing objection?
I, I think it's beyond this competence of this witness to testify as to what another engineering firm assumed 20-some years ago. He can testify, but the plan shows, but the report shows, but I think it's beyond his competence to speculate as to what another engineering firm assumed.
I don't think he was testifying as to what another civil engineering firm assumed, he is testifying to what another civil engineering firm did, if I'm correct, they connected both the residential and the golf course together, isn't that what you were saying?
I'm just saying, if I were to design a system on a property, that would be trespassing if I designed a stormwater pipe to then divert flow to another property without its permission, or it's something that's not going to create hydrologic trespass.
Are you, are you familiar with any kind of an easement or a license, or any kind of property right that allows this pipe to flow on, flow into this property?
I'm assuming the permit from the TEP and the planning board approval, that was part of the...
I'll ask you, do you have any documents that create an easement or any kind of property right?
No.
We will present, we will present the entire history if you want. Well, I can give you the whole title.
I have to witness, thank you.
I understand, I'm just explaining, we can present the entire property if you want to say.
Thank you, I have to witness. You'll make the case.
I'm not making my case.
Any questions for the witness? Well, there's no question pending, are there any other questions for the witness?
Maybe you should, there's some.
Pardon me?
Here, let's, let's just keep moving, let's turn off the...
So, what's the next question?
I just want, I just want to ask you a question, Mr. Gold, the existence of this pipe interconnects the stormwater for the fairways residential community to the golf course? Question?
Yes.
Thank you.
And to be clear, the, where was I going with this, the, the...
Did the CAFR report reference this at all?
No.
They just missed it, or what?
I don't know. Okay, so, one of the things that is of concern is the, the GDP plan or application...
Sorry, did I, I didn't hear a question, is there a question pending?
Well, I'm still testifying on that fight.
Talking about the pipe.
I, I just don't recall hearing a question, I thought the question was...
I'll ask the question, Jack, and it was a continuation of his answer, you interrupted him by asking him if there are any...
Mr. Gold, please just ask the next question, you said you would go on.
Please, you describe the pipe and the application for the park GDP through.
Okay, the pipe, there's, there's a, there's not a clear reference, the drainage area maps that are included with the GDP application do not illustrate the additional acreage that is actually discharging from that detention basin eight, and the portion of that 380, 368 acre watershed that was originally designed for that pond, to, to cover that portion of the detention basin, or the flows from the 100-year event out into the fairways golf course. The...
No, I'm, I'm going to make sure that I understand, what are you saying is the relationship of this 48-inch or 44, that's a pretty big pipe, right? Carries a lot of water?
Correct.
The relationship of that pipe to this general development plan application, I, I want to make sure that I'm very, very clear what that is.
During the 10, according to the Giuliani Plan, during the 10 to 100-year storm event, going through the fairways development, a proportion of that's going to go into the fairways golf course, and that's why, when you read the report, it talks about how the golf course had the ability to collect it, hold it, and eventually allow it to recharge. And what I was getting at was now this pipe is going into a section that is surrounded by retaining walls, there's not really an area that can be, that the water can then overflow and then spread out across the golf course and then recharge and go back in, it's literally got nowhere to go. If, and this is speaking as an engineer, if I was an engineer, I'd be worried about creating a hydrologic trespass issue on, on a client, when they're, my client, when now, if they, if this basin fails, something happens to it, that they can't collect the flow anymore and it backs back up into the, the fairways development, that could be an issue. Now, you could say, well, the water already flows there, so what's the difference? The difference is you've got an open air golf course, or pond in the golf course. If that thing overfloods, overflows, it just goes all over the golf course, no harm, no foul. So, you're really feeling, now, you're going into a highly engineered, maintained system that is limited in area, and more limited in area than the pond and the surrounding grades that could take the water.
So, Mr. Gold, the, the pipe on D-11, the 48-inch pipe that goes into the pond, that's the same pipe that you're referencing on D-12 coming from the fairways?
That is correct.
Okay, so now, is the pond going away?
Yes.
The pond's going away?
Yes.
Where are they going to put the pond at?
Well, they're filling the pond in and they're building a recharge basin, so they're going to act closer to the fairways property, truncate it and put a recharge basin to intercept that flow coming off of the fairways development.
So, is the recharge basin smaller than the pond?
Can it handle the same amount of water?
Can it handle the same amount of water?
I have no idea, the, the, the application didn't provide any information on whether or not, how that water is being diverted, how much water, was the basin designed to accept all that water, it's literally not in this application.
They don't show the pipe going into basin?
They show the pipe going into the basin, there's no calculations or explanation of how the basins are going, those, that infiltration basin is going to handle the flow coming into the property. Now, and just to be clear, they can't just cut this pipe off either, they cut the pipe off, they're actually going to reduce the capacity of that basin and the outflow going downstream, where the basin that goes normally, under lower conditions, it'll back up and cause all kinds of flooding problems there, and frankly, would be, and, and now you could say, well, what if we cut it off and convey the water, let's just keep the water going downstream on the fairways property. Well, now you're going to have to go back in, they're going to have to get a flood hazard area permit to divert all that water back there, they're going to have to create an emergency spillway, because now that, that overflow area is not allowed to convey the water there anymore, and that basin does not have an other emergency spillway, and you're going to be sending additional volumes of water and potentially flooding downstream from that basin.
So, we don't know, we don't know if the new retention basin is, has more capacity than the pond, does, we don't have the heads left, we don't know if that's the same amount.
So, it's based on the assumption that it doesn't, that it will be bad?
It's a huge problem if you...
No, but we don't, we're challenging that if it's one-tenth the capacity of the pond, that might be a problem, but it might have twice the capacity of the pond, we don't know.
We don't know.
That's something that needs to be addressed.
And how do you approve a plan when you have no idea how big that basin would be and how many units it's going to affect?
The, that's a legal argument, it's an argument that an engineer reports. I have a couple of questions. I thought I heard at the outset that there was a, that this plan was submitted to the DEP and that your firm objected or prepared the objection. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did you raise this issue about this pipe to the DEP and your objection when you objected to the plan to the DEP?
No, we didn't.
What?
Because we didn't have, I didn't have the Lynch Giuliani report to see that. I didn't have the existing conditions, at least we didn't see the existing conditions of that pipe coming in, and it wasn't our purview to determine where that pipe.
And here's another question. I thought I heard in your testimony that the backup, the suspenders that go with the belt, was that in the event that the, this pond fails from this four foot pipe in the 100 year storm event, comes downstream from the fairways, that then it would spill over into the golf course? And, you know, we're talking about the capacity now, you know, golf course gets flooded, that's one thing. Well, have you done any calculations to see like what, that area of the golf course, what's going in that area of the golf course now? Is that going to be a low area where there will be homes? Will that flood? What, what happens?
It's going into that stormwater basin system, starting from 18.
But what happens if that basin, but had previously gone into a pond, if the pond overflowed, it flooded into the golf course? Is that what I heard you say? So now it goes into the basin, if the basin overflows, where does it go?
To the adjacent properties and houses.
Is that a low spot on the site or would that be?
It is a low spot.
Where would it be on the? Can you put up D14?
Yeah.
How, where do we have D14?
This one.
No, D14 is a different, for different purposes.
I got the wrong number.
I think you.
Sir, can you show us where this low spot is? Can you look for it?
That's D14. I don't, I don't know if that's what you want. You just have.
Yeah, that's fine.
That, that's the whole site. That's your show where the low spot is. Can you hook, can you go up to the TV and point it at us? Don't trip on any of these wires. I don't like it suited by Ms. Donato.
She got suited for other reasons, Mr. Jackson.
Take that as a compliment.
So the record should reflect that you are pointing your finger at what particular identifiable feature is that detention basin or the basin, the stormwater basin between Fairways?
It's basin C2.
Basin C2?
That's correct. Also, keep in mind this basin, and just to be frank and transparent, this basin is hydraulically connected to these basins, excuse me, as well. I'm just getting myself in the face there.
Basically, if you go to this one, this D7.
So technically it can overflow into those two?
I just want to look at the virtual one.
Correct.
Looks like this lot, because this shows adjacent.
It's right near the snowstorm.
What, oh, we're just on the spinning wheel there?
The hourglass is this.
All right. We're looking at D7. Where is this?
Over there.
A little up, please.
It's a little sailboat at the bottom.
Very good, that's good. Yes. So the pipe comes in from the fairways here, connects to this basin, just C2, and there are pipes between the other basins.
Where it was or is the pond on the surface?
It's right about here.
Does that, does that continue to be a low spot in the, in the final configured site design?
It does. Right now, if that pond were to overflow, it basically flows down here.
Which is double loss, isn't that helpful?
Well, keeps it, well, it keeps it from. Here's the problem, if that backs up higher than it does now, and that pipe was never designed to hydraulically accept that depth of water, it'll back up, back, it'll restrict the flow from going back in or restrict the flow coming out of detention basin eight and potentially cause further, more water to go downstream or over top their own basin.
With their own basin, you mean the Fairways basin or the basin in the park?
The Fairways basin.
But again, this is all under the assumption that, did you call it C2, that basin?
Yes.
So that's all under that assumption that C2 and the two that it joins with cannot handle the runoff?
Correct, and the applicant has not provided any calculations to show that they've taken that into account.
And I would like for them to know that.
All right, thank you.
Can I have a question? Thank you.
No, no, I think, I think if you have any more questions, I'll ask them, but I think it'd be really helpful that if we could do the cross examination, say, nice of this small project.
Yes, absolutely. I just want the board to know, we've been in a process in the litigation and discovery and the.
Mr. Donato, this is not necessary to answer. Please proceed with your direct examination of the witness.
Mr. Jackson, you began asking the witness.
I did, and I.
Why didn't he identify his previous?
I asked him for a question.
And I think it's a very, excuse me, I please finish.
Please direct your question to the witness. We don't need to.
I'd like to address my comment to the board, and my comment to the board is.
Your comment to the board is not appropriate this time. Please.
Well, your question should always be.
That's your point, you should be under.
And I should.
I'm not testifying.
We don't need an explanation of why or how, right? Just ask your witness the next question, please.
No asking questions, like, Mr. Goll. Based on the information that you have seen in connection with this application before this planning, are you able to tell the board that the way that the basins are designed for the park would be adequate to handle the flow from the fairways?
No.
Thank you.
Or you're not able to determine whether it would, you're not saying it won't be able to, but you don't know whether it will be able to. Those two double names, I'm sorry. Are you saying it will not be able to handle it, or you're saying we don't know whether it'll be able to handle it? That's clear.
I think you're, you can, you're not, right now you don't know if they can, it can handle. Thank you. The information has not been provided in the application.
Give me your question, please.
Now, as an engineer, in evaluating what is before this board as a, as a general development plan, is it your recommendation that they obtain information to address this concern about this four foot pipe?
I think they should provide, I think if the board is going to make, or if, I can't speak to the board in terms of what they decide. If I were the engineer for the municipality, I'd want routing information to understand the impacts of the flow from the basin, from basin number eight on the Fairways Property into the golf course.
And if changes are necessary to the plan in order to address this, this issue, could that change the number of dwelling units that are proposed to be vested with approval under this general development plan?
One of the things I just wanted to go through, and it's just the last thing, is the, under the plan unit ordinance, one of the things we noticed on the land use plan, which is my last exhibit, well, not including the stormwater report, the last planned exhibit, what number is that?
That is 14, the one that had the light green coloration?
Yes.
That's D14, land use plan of dynamic engineering.
It's a little hard to read on this 11 by 17, and you may, I'm not sure if you can even read on the screen, but what I've done is I went through and I looked at, and we noticed the one big change between the caper application and this application is a number of homes along the property boundaries had been shifted toward the interior circular roads. The setback in accordance with the plan unit ordinance, planned unit development ordinance is a minimum 20 foot setbacks from the road.
Front yard.
Front yard setbacks, thank you. The front yard setbacks and the interior circulation road is 20 feet. These houses that counted about 103 are all pushed toward the road, assuming they're trying to comply with the 75 foot perimeter boundary setback. However, that requires then the driveways to go to the rear yard. So either the, there'll be, need to be a waiver proposed, but it also goes to show that, again, there's probably more, if you wanted a 100% compliant plan, this plan doesn't show it. You'd need to do something with those 103, huh, units, or I'll call them surface units, they're not the basement units, the 103 units of the 556, it's nearly 20% of those units, have their front yard setback reduced to, what I could scale off the PDFs, is about around between 10 and 12 feet. So from 20 to 10 and 12 feet, which then required them to put the driveways in the rear yard within the 75 foot perimeter setback.
And the 75 foot perimeter setback under the plan unit development ordinance 18 dish 1021 is supposed to be free of structures other than?
Gatehouses, fences and walls. Correct.
Walls and, no building structure than any gatehouses, walls or fences.
Right, and even the, so you've now got driveways in the 75 foot setback. And also, just to be clear, retaining walls are exempt from that requirement, but detention basins are not. And so a detention basin as a manmade structure is also not allowed within the 75 foot perimeter boundary setback.
Thank you. So basically, D14, you have identified those lots where the buildings do not meet the front yard setback requirement.
Correct.
And they also, those setback onto the perimeter of the property do not meet the perimeter setback requirement because they have parking lots in the backyard.
Good. Tonight, Ms. Donato, I'm going to interrupt you for a moment with a term of kind of omission.
Yes.
You're going to like this.
One of the board members is asking me about, I just remember this from earlier parts of the hearing and from going through the pre, you know, our pre meetings on this. I think the configuration in this area is there are driveways between the houses and then the parking is in the rear yard. I think that's what you're talking about. Do you have an exhibit where you could show us that configuration right now? Or can we even blow up the, you know, expand this one so you can get?
Mr. Jackson, this line of questioning, I think, would be more appropriate for the planner and not the engineer. I'm not sure if we're going to be rehashing this same point when we get to her proper professional.
I just have a question.
I think if you look at exhibit D10, I think that's the one, isn't that right, Mr. Goll? That if you look at the fourth, bottom, on the bottom right hand side?
Yes.
You see all those, the vehicles that are, now this is a modest projection of the number of parking spaces because it is based on, this is based on risks, the residential sites from these dangers, right?
Correct.
And it's based on a three bedroom unit, is that correct? And there are indications that it's, these are five bedroom units. And this is based on three beds?
Correct.
Okay, that's, so that, if you have a plan, shows the parking lots in the rear yard, in the rear yard. Is there anything else that shows it other than this one? But I, I mean, I think that pretty much shows it, but.
That's correct.
Is that, is that your question? Thank you.
You got these little plans, you really can.
No, that little one you cannot, no.
The ordinance requires one inch equals 200 feet.
That's the problem, scales, you know, it's hard because of the scale. Okay, so.
So how much should I, how much should I?
I don't have very much long at all, just a front page. Any?
No, because we could get done by nine. I'd like to at least have Mr. Schneider's cross examination.
I'm going to try my very best. Okay, now, I wanted to ask you about the timing schedule. Are you prepared to go up to the timing schedule?
Of the basic plan? Yes.
Yeah.
So part of the ordinance states that the proposed timing schedule in case of a plant development's construction is contemplated over a period of years, including any terms or conditions which are intended to protect the interests of the public and the residents occupied by any subsection of the plant development prior to the completion of the plant development in its entirety. One of the things that I pointed out, it's not explicitly stated, but as you saw in the cross sections I provided, there's a lot of earthwork that's going to be going on here. Cuts of 25, up to 25 feet, fills of 10 to 13 feet. There's going to be a lot of dirt moving around this site. I don't even know if the site balances, I haven't, there's no information that would provide that, nor will we request it to try to calculate that based on the plans that were provided. So we don't know if that, this is going to require an import, an export, will it generate trucks that are going to have to bring material in? And what are the overall effects on the phasing plan in terms of will each, each phase be balanced to ensure that the, that there may be, maybe there's, there's no export or import of materials that would, you know, add to traffic on the streets?
Okay, and given the, the retaining walls and the height of those walls, if there was to be, if this wasn't a balanced site, where they were to have to import fill, how would that fill, arrive at the site?
Usually in tangents or triaxals of trucks that can handle 18 or 20, I forgot how many the triaxles, but it could be up to 23 or 25 yards per truck.
And if the, and you know that, you were here when they testified about the phasing plan?
Yes.
And first section of it is going to be up by the entrance road, isn't that correct?
Essentially, it's going to evolve where the first phase is up by the entrance road and then the last phase will be constructed down toward the Fairways Skyline Drive area.
So if trucks have to import fill and just section, the first phase is completed, how will they arrive into the site, do you know?
Through the first, you know, the prior phases.
So people living in the development and early phases will have these trucks coming by them in order to deliver fill?
Yes.
Right, so I think that we have pretty well covered everything, Mr. Goll.
Thank you.
You were very thorough, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Donato.
I should give you a break, but I'm not going to because I'm going to take this much time, it's awesome. I'm okay.
Good evening, Mr. Goll.
Good.
Good evening. So the packet of exhibits that have been marked D7 through D14, some of them are derived from the caper urban application, is that correct?
That is correct.
Others are derived from the GDP application before this board.
That is correct.
And still others are derived from preliminary and final site plans for the existing Fairways Residential Community, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
And I believe it's your testimony that the GDP application is similar to the CAFRA plan?
Yes.
Very similar?
Very similar.
But not identical?
Not in all aspects, no.
And?
Like, close enough to compare the two.
Close enough to compare the two, but nonetheless, it would be necessary to get DEP approval to modify the CAFRA permit in the event the board were to approve the GDP and the applicant would then just subsequently go for a preliminary and final site plan subdivision of fulfills consistent with the GDP, is that correct?
That is correct.
Which would give the DEP another, I get the appall, so to speak, with regard to any adult issues within its jurisdiction.
I'm going to object, the purpose of these proceedings is not to decide what the GDP can do, the purpose is to decide what is GDP required.
Yes, but there was a lot of testimony about the CAFRA permit application, and we have exhibits that come from the CAFRA permit application.
But you have exhibits from the CAFRA application, doesn't it?
I'm here in the chair again, I've never had someone like Ms. Donato who comes up and invades my personal space like that. Can I, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, please, you know, all kidding aside, I know we're all having fun. But the, I think the objector and the witness suggested that, you know, some of the designs may, may not work, may have not been completely thought out, and the, and the point of that, I think, was that maybe the board should not approve the application on the basis that, you know, some of these features might not work. So I think it's fair for Mr. Gross to cross-examine the witness. I always do that, I apologize.
I'm much better looking than my partner.
That's debatable. The, you know, I think the cross-examination is to emphasize the point that it's not a final configuration, and there are various levels of view that we do, and if something does not work, it would, and it had to be changed, it would still go back to the DEP. And I think that's a fair point to make on cross-examination, so I think you should allow this line of questioning to proceed.
I don't say that it's not, that there is, section 22 of the lay-in's law indicates that when this board acts, it acts and it conditions its approval in appropriate instances on other governmental approvals, and I don't dispute that. Our purpose for being here is to establish that this board has the jurisdiction to approve, modify, or deny, or send the applicant back to the joint board, and then if they have to go to the DEP, they don't, that's all. It just, that it's the GDP that would be open, that's what would be open, regardless of how that may impact on a CAFRA.
Okay, so Julie, I would like, I think you should go, proceed.
Do you recall the questions, sir, or shall I repeat them? Please, ready. You've agreed that the GDP application plan is very similar to the plan approved by DEP.
Nearly identical.
But there are some differences.
Yes.
And to develop as called for by the DEP would require, I'm sorry, to develop as proposed in the GDP would require going back to DEP and getting the CAFRA permit amended, correct?
Correct.
And DEP could look at all issues within its jurisdiction and consider that amendment, is that correct?
That application was a little different because it was initially denied, and then there was a settlement agreement on appeal, and so, and we were involved in some of that process, and we had no idea what was agreed to behind the doors, closed doors. So we don't know what they would agree to.
Well, there's a written settlement agreement, is there not?
Yes.
And you've seen that written settlement agreement?
I believe so, but I don't recall.
And there was public notice of that written settlement agreement, was there not?
I don't recall.
And your firm, your firm submitted written comments on the proposed settlement. So does that refresh your recollection?
Yes, it does.
There was a written settlement agreement that your firm saw, is that correct?
Correct, but the deal was done.
And, and, and does that settlement agreement, agreement relieve the DEP of jurisdiction?
I like, I have to object, excuse me, Mr. Schneider.
I hadn't completed a question.
Slow down, slow down. So, let me finish the question, we can object all we want, and then we will all listen to your objection, Mr. Stein will respond, we will rule, and we'll move on, continue.
Does that written settlement agreement say DEP doesn't have jurisdiction to review a CAFRA permit amendment?
Yes. Ms. Donato.
Only far field of what this board is here to do and what the testimony was, absent having submission of plans before this board that would show aspects of this development that they're seeking to have you approve, and vest, and vest for extended periods of time with protection against zoning changes, that's all, that's what we're here for. It's not about the CAFRA settlement that was approved behind closed doors that we only were able to comment on later, it's not about that. That's up in the appellate division. It's about what's before this board on this GDP. And if you wanna keep going on about the fact that they, they got reversal of the denial and all of that, well, we'll get into it, we'll be here until the cows come home.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. No, I think to Ms. Donato's point, Ms. Donato, you raised the idea that if approval was granted on this application, everything would vest. And I think Mr. Schneider's disagreeing with you and saying that's not the case because DEP would have a say in that, whether we say it vests or not is irrelevant, because it would have to go back in front of the DEP. Mr. Schneider, is that not what you are saying?
That's important, I was saying, and in addition, at the very outset of this evening's hearing, I requested that we not get into the CAFRA permit. Yet, as the witness has acknowledged, they submitted plans, they submitted exhibits that come directly from the CAFRA permit. The chair decided that the board was going to allow more in than less. If they can present direct testimony relating to the CAFRA permit, I can cross-examine.
Mr. Donato, you can speak, or we must move on.
I think there's confusion in that the applicant is before this board on the GDP. In order for this witness to have evidence that he could show and present what is the stormwater plan that you didn't have planned before you for, the application was, I think, erroneously declared complete, even because this is in your ordinance. So if you were to approve the plan that's before you, they don't have to go back to the DEP because it's virtually identical, they might have a little minor change, a little minor tinkering. So it really, it's a, it's kind of comparing apples and oranges. Whatever the board does that changes anything that happened with the DEP, would require the applicant to go back, you know, and get approval, but this is a GDP application for which you didn't get the information that you needed for us to evaluate in pursuant to your own ordinance. So I don't think what happened behind closed doors at the DEP on the settlement and what happened with the stormwater plan is relevant, is relevant to this GDP. What's relevant is, do they have the information here? We had no other source of information because of deficiencies in the submission, we rely on the CAFRA plan, that's all. We're not saying the CAFRA plan is right, we have appeals on that, that's not it. We're just saying that that's where the information was about the retaining walls and the detention bases.
All right, so the objection was, can Mr. Schneider continue, is one question made, I'm gonna say he can, because the amount of time that they spent arguing about it, he could ask the questions to be done, and I think the board is wise enough not to be influenced if something is misspoken, so please continue, Mr. Stein, thank you, Ms. Donato.
Directing your attention, sir, to D7. What is the prominence of this exhibit?
This 13 walls?
D7, it's just right here.
Yes.
What is the prominence of, where did it come from? Did you create this exhibit from scratch?
No.
Where did it come from?
It was from the CAFRA application plan that included the retaining walls.
So was this part of the approved?
CAFRA application plan?
Yes.
And did you interpose two different documents onto this page? The window in the upper left-hand corner, did that appear on, on the plan just as it's depicted on D7?
No.
Where did that come from?
A portion of it was a typical detail in the CAFRA plan, and we added information to describe to the board how a retaining wall is constructed.
So the insert part of it was a typical retaining wall had shown in the application?
A portion of it.
And part of the insert, you added?
Correct.
What did you add?
Well, color. We also added the excavation limits and the note at the bottom.
And did you add anything to the larger plan that was used in D7?
Just highlighted areas where we interpreted there were retaining walls.
What do you mean by you interpreted there were retaining walls?
Well, there were top of the wall elevations, bottom of walls, but I guess we didn't interpret, we found the retaining walls.
And it says on this plan, top of the wall, bottom of the wall?
No, we used their, close up of their grading plan, which is more close up of this plan on this.
So D7 comes from the CAFRA application?
The, yeah, the basis for the layout, yes.
And DEP ultimately issued the CAFRA?
Yes.
D12, I'm sorry, D8, where does D8 come from?
The GDP application.
And did you testify, how many bone units are called for in the GDP application?
556.
And do you know how many units were approved in, by DEP in CAFRA?
I don't recall.
Was a different number, wasn't it?
I don't recall.
Yet without knowing how many units were approved by DEP versus how many are proposed by the GDP application, without knowing whether there's a difference or how substantial that difference is, you're able to say they're virtually identical?
They're virtually identical.
Is it not true that you wrote a letter, you signed a letter to DEP commenting on the CAFRA plan?
Yes.
That was derived from the settlement?
Yes.
And did you not state that it contemplated 517, 517 units with the possibility of 517 basement apartments?
I don't recall, that was two years ago.
But 517, in your opinion, would be virtually identical to 556?
Yes.
Okay. Sections B, C, and D, as depicted on here, you have a comparison to a house on the existing fairways development, is that correct?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, let's look at section D, existing, and section E, proposed. What's that on the far right-hand where it says fairways open space and then has what looks like a rectangle, or more than a rectangle, a 3D rectangle? What is that?
That's a depiction of an existing home on the fairways, or the fairways community.
In relation to section B, as, as you delineated it in the proposed GDP?
No, we had to use the existing, the proposed grades for the, the CAFRA application because the engineer provided zero grading information for the board to decide upon.
Okay, so the existing and proposed in D9 also is taken from the CAFRA application?
Correct.
And in fact, from the approved CAFRA plan?
Correct.
So you compared the building, the, an existing home in fairways to what was proposed in the CAFRA permit and approved by DEP for section D?
Yeah, which is extremely similar to, and like I said, virtually identical to the GP application. Board needed to, we, I felt that in order to depict instead of a two-dimensional plan as the, as your engineer had shown, and we felt it was important for the board to make their decision to look at this project in three dimensions.
Yeah, my question is very simple. So what it does is compare the existing, a home in the existing fairways to the approved CAFRA plan?
Actually, it'll be, it'll be better looking in the approved CAFRA plan than the proposed, because you won't have cars in the rear yard on the CAFRA plan.
Well, so what do you compare it to? That's what I'm trying to figure out. The approved CAFRA plan?
The GDP and the CAFRA plan, they're virtually identical.
The approved CAFRA plan?
That statement?
I'm asking, no, I'm asking, do you compare it to the approved CAFRA plan?
Yes.
Not to the originally proposed law CAFRA plan, but the approved CAFRA plan?
Correct.
And similarly, for section C, you compare an existing home in fairways to existing conditions and to what's proposed in the approved CAFRA plan, is that correct?
Correct.
And the same is true for section D, is that correct?
Correct.
Section A does not have any comparison to an existing home in fairways, is that correct?
Correct.
So let's look at section D. The elevation in fairways is higher than the existing elevation in the golf course, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if the golf course were to be developed per the approved CAFRA permit, which you regard as virtually identical to the GDP, the elevation in the existing fairways community would still be higher than the adjacent area in the golf course, is that correct?
Except the sightline from the home, there's an existing sightline that goes, somebody walking out the backyard could see, virtually across the golf course, they'll be looking at the back of the home. virtually across the golf course, they'll be looking at the back of the home.
Yeah, that's all very interesting, but we'd get a lot further if you answered my question.
I just did.
My, my question is, the elevation in the fairways community would still be higher than the elevation in the, in the developed golf course, is that correct?
Uh, it'll be 13 feet less high than it is now.
Yeah, my, my question is, will the elevation in the fairways? Now, I'll ask that many times, you know, I'm one of the few people here who's old enough to remember Adlai Stevenson's famous speech before the U.S. Congress where he said, "I'm prepared to stand here till hell freezes over, till I get a question, and I'm prepared to do that." The question is very simple, Sarah. The, if developed per the GDP, I'm sorry, per the approved CAFRA permit, which you say is virtually identical to the GDP, the elevation in fairways, adult community, would still be higher than the elevation in the golf course, is that true or not true? Very simple question, Sarah.
Except for blocking their view, it will be quite, it'll be a little bit lower.
So the elevation, so the answer to my question is yes. Is that correct? The elevation will continue to be lower, it's not that simple. Well, the elevation?
The elevation of the roof of the house on the proposed development, that'll be higher.
The grade, the grade, the elevation to the grade.
The dirt.
Chair, I believe that the greatest issue we asked is ground elevation.
Ground elevation.
Ground elevation.
Thanks.
It will be lower than the golf course than in fairways, is that correct?
Yes.
Section C, existing conditions, the elevation in the fairways is higher than the elevation in the golf course, the ground elevation. Is that correct?
In the proposed condition?
In the existing condition.
Oh, yes.
And in the proposed condition, the ground elevation in fairways in section C would continue to be higher than the ground elevation of the golf course, is that correct?
Albeit from a retaining wall, the drop-off, and, um, fills on the other side, it'll still be lower on the golf course.
And with regard to section D, under existing conditions, the elevation's higher in the fairways than it is on the golf course, is that correct?
Yes.
And in the proposed condition, the ground elevation in the fairways would continue to be higher than the ground elevation of the golf course, is that correct?
Correct, since all instances of sightlines would be blocked, yes.
But that's not an exception. It, it, in all instances, the ground elevation would be lower, is that correct?
Just as all views would be blocked.
My question is, will the elevation be lower?
I agree with you.
You do agree with me.
I also, okay, I also say the views would be blocked, sir. I'm explaining my answer.
So, can we ask, how many feet less?
You can ask where you want, sir.
So how, how many, I think we've established that the ground elevation, thank you, Terry, is lower in the proposed development than the fairways. Do you have any idea how many feet lower currently? No, if the proposed plan, the ground elevation, proposed plan, ground elevation, the fairways testified that it's lower, how much lower, on average? I guess we can say foot by section. Is it foot, is it three feet, is it five inches?
I'm gonna estimate five to 10 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Now, turning to D10. Again, this was derived from the CAFRA plan approved by DEP rather than the GDP because the CAFRA plan approved by DEP has elevations and the GDP does not, is that correct?
Yes.
And so what exhibit 10 shows is that if you now have a home adjacent to a golf course, you see a golf course next door, is that correct?
Correct.
And it also shows that if that golf course is developed with residential units and you now have a home adjacent to a golf course post-development, you're gonna have a home adjacent to another home, is that correct?
Yes. Or a basin.
Or basin. Uh, is there a basin depicted on D10?
No.
No. Would you agree that very often when a piece of land that's undeveloped is developed with buildings, you're gonna see those buildings from the adjacent portion?
Yeah, but if you were previously looking over a golf course and now you're looking at the back of a house, that's much different. But that's out of my purview.
Yeah, but, but it's that, that's what you'd expect to happen when you develop a golf course.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm not objecting, because if this witness is here on engineering issues, if I had presented him to discuss the visual impact, he would have, you know, there would have been an objection. He's here to talk about the general development.
Well, isn't he the one that brought it up then? When he answered his question about elevation? When he was asked about what, what was higher than the other, he said, "Well, now we'll be looking at homes, so factor sightline." So, didn't this, would this invite that?
Well, I think that he's looking at homes, but then the question that was asked, that was not the question that I just objected to, Mr. Jackson. I didn't object to the previous question. The question is asking him, don't you expect that people living next to a golf course would be ready to, uh, be, be, know and expect that there might be buildings that will be developed on the golf course? That's not the issue. That, that is, that's the question I have objection.
Schneider, are you prepared to move on?
Sure, sure, that, that, that wasn't my question. That wasn't my question. But, but I think the witness has already acknowledged that when you're, next door to something that's not developed and then they put a building on it, you're gonna see a building.
Mr. Schneider, I will take conditional notice and that would occur, so please move on. Does the CAFRA permit require that retaining walls? Describe that. What type of retaining wall did you describe as a wall that's depicted on D7?
A modular block wall.
Does the CAFRA permit require that all of the retaining walls be modular block walls?
If the plans are part of the permit, then yes.
Because the plans state that every retaining wall will be a modular block wall?
That's what they depicted.
They depict every wall as a modular block wall?
They provided the typical modular block wall that they will build.
Okay. There are retaining, let's go with these, which exhibit do you maintain depicts a retaining wall that will intrude on property in the adjoining municipality?
I don't recall the, I don't have the, um, exhibit number.
Wait, if you hold it up, I'll be able to. D9.
Thank you.
So if I heard your testimony correctly, you said if they construct a modular block wall, it would then intrude into the adjoining municipality, is that correct?
Correct, that's what I used, what the engineer provided in the CAFRA.
And the GDP application doesn't say that either another doesn't use modular block walls, is that correct?
Doesn't say anything.
And what's before this board is not the CAFRA application, but the GDP application, is that right?
What's before this board is the feasibility, how can you make, determine the feasibility without knowing what kind of retaining walls you're building?
Yeah, well, the process, the way it works here, so as I, the process is not you. So the GDP application is what's before the board, not the CAFRA? Do you agree?
You included the EIS as part of this application, so I'm assuming it's all fair game. And that was part of the CAFRA permit?
Well, Mr. Nato stated that what's before this board is the GDP application and not the CAFRA permit, do you agree?
I'm confused because you, you've been intermingling the EIS on the CAFRA and saying, "Don't look at the plan, but look at the EIS."
I have not mentioned the EIS.
How about your applicant, in the application it has?
So you don't know whether what's before this board is the GDP application or the CAFRA permit?
They're virtually identical.
My question is, do you know which is before this board?
Yes.
What?
The GDP application.
Thank you.
As well as the EIS from the CAFRA.
And, and the GDP application, the GDP application doesn't say that there are going to be these modular block retaining walls, doesn't?
Doesn't tell the board anything.
My question is, it doesn't say that, that the retaining walls will be modular block retaining walls, doesn't?
Doesn't say anything.
My question is whether it says that they're going to be modular block retaining walls. It's a question that could be answered.
It doesn't say whether they're gonna be grid walls, sheet pile walls, doesn't say anything.
Okay, so there, there are retaining walls that could be built that would not intrude into the neighboring municipality, is that correct?
Uh, I don't agree. You're gonna need construction widths, you're gonna need excavation, you're gonna need, you can't just, it's not, you're not just gonna put a thin line on a piece of paper and install a wall, you're gonna have, uh, construction equipment, you drive sheet, you're gonna decrane, uh, you need all kinds of stuff. You're talking about widths of 20 feet.
You're saying?
And, and that's, and these walls won't accommodate that.
Any retaining wall of any engineering type would have to intrude 20 feet into the neighboring, into the neighboring municipality?
I would say that in order to construct those walls, you're gonna intrude one way or the other.
20 feet.
I didn't say 20 feet. Crossing a property line is crossing a property line. It's a difference whether you're one foot or 20 feet, it's trespassing.
Is it your testimony with a reasonable degree of engineering certainty that the application, that the GDP application seeks setback variances from the 20-foot setback?
I didn't see anything in the application that I read.
Well, did you not testify that many of the lots would not satisfy the 20-foot setback?
Actually, I'm, it's confusing because the lots show that they're half the distance to the, to the roadway, yet the table specifically says they comply. It says 20 feet when it's 11 feet 103 times.
So you're saying with a reasonable degree of engineering certainty that this applicant is seeking 111 variances from the 20-foot setback?
You can't make an engineering certainty answer based on an application question, that's not an engineering question.
So, so the answer is you're, you're not saying that with a reasonable degree of engineering certainty?
I don't know what you're saying.
No, I'm asking what you're saying.
I'm gonna ask that, if I could ask that the chair, uh, ask the audience who you're paying from, is Rob there?
No, uh, who is it?
I think we're gonna get out of here a lot sooner if we let Mr. Schneider give us some, so please try to keep it down.
Sir, is it your testimony that the GDP application requires a setback from the 20-foot roads? I'm sorry. Is it your testimony that the GDP application requires a variance from the 20-foot road setback on more than 100 lots?
I'm just pointing out that they don't meet the plan unit development requirements.
Because they require, would require a variance from the 20-foot setback?
I didn't say that, but I, I, I'm not a planner, I wouldn't know what kind of variances they might have.
Is it your testimony with a reasonable degree of engineering certainty that the lots do not satisfy, over 100 lots do not satisfy the 20-foot setback requirement?
Correct.
And could the board not simply remedy that by conditioning the GDP approval on the applicant satisfying the 20-foot setback requirement?
Lose some homes. Lose, you'll lose a lot of homes.
But that condition would impress your concern, is that not correct?
Sure, but why not do an application that needs that and use those number of units?
But the, the application does state in the, in the table that all of the lots need a 20-foot setback requirement, is that correct?
It does.
Okay.
It's inconsistent with what's shown on the plan.
Now, the stormwater management plan for the CAFRA permit, that was much lengthier than the stormwater management plan submitted with the GDP application, is that correct?
I'm trying to recall, I don't recall, I don't know.
The omissions, well, what are, what's some of the, describe that. Is it your testimony that there's missing information from the stormwater management plan submitted as part of the GDP application?
Yes.
What, Gibson?
Stormwater routing, um, there's watershed areas that are missing, uh, from being depicted on the existing and proposed, uh, contributing watershed areas. Routing calculations.
Anything else?
The stormwater piping routing, if there were any?
Anything else?
I don't recall.
The routing calculations are in the stormwater management plan for the CAFRA application, are they not?
From what I recall, they are.
And the piping routing is in the stormwater management plan for the CAFRA application, is it not?
Correct.
And the DEP issued a CAFRA permit with the finding that all of the stormwater management requirements were satisfied, did it not?
It did, and we disagree.
You disagreed, yes.
There you go.
I, I, I understand that you disagree, but the DEP had this additional information before, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
And the 48-inch pipe is depicted on the approved CAFRA plan, is it not?
I don't recall.
You don't know one way or another?
No. But we're reviewing the GDP, why were the calculations not submitted for this application?
Well, that, that goes to the question of whether the GDP application is anticipated to have the same level of detail as a preliminary and final site plan application, which I think is not an engineering question either, it's a, it's a, it's more of a legal question.
We agree.
Okay. Your firm submitted two reports. Your firm submitted two reports to DEP on the capra plan that came out of the settlement agreement, DEP. Is that not correct?
I don't recall.
Well, you signed the plan dated November 29, 2017. Is that correct?
I don't know. I don't have the report in front of me.
I don't think we need to mark this as an exhibit. I'm going to show the document marked dated November 29, 2017, just to see if there was fresh recollection.
Do you get minutes to exhibit?
Well, if you were to estimate how much water would your process have, I'm not trying to limit you. I'm just trying to think if you can get it done and you can ask for 10 minutes, that would go over. But if you need another hour, then we're going to knock off the chat. If a witness answers my questions, I'll be done. If a witness doesn't answer them, I'm passing them again and again.
Does that refresh your recollection as to whether you signed a report, a letter report to DEP commenting on the capra permit?
Yes.
Going to show you another document on your firm's letterhead. Also signed by you and Mr. Gallagher dated December 20, 2017. Does that refresh your recollection as to when you submitted a second letter report to DEP commenting on the plan that resulted from the capra settlement?
Yes.
And the answer is, is yes, you did?
Oh, yes, I did, yeah.
You raised concerns with DEP concerning the retaining walls in those letters. Is that correct?
Yes.
And DEP ultimately issued the permit notwithstanding your objection to the 3.9 miles of retaining walls. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you don't agree with DEP that they issued the permit. Is that correct? Well, that question, I just...
Please move on.
You don't agree. Is that correct?
We simply pointed out that those walls would require a significant amount of maintenance and cut off some of the tree save areas. It should require a lot of maintenance.
And one of the issues you raised concerned the groundwater levels and impacts of basins on groundwater levels and the feasibility of the basins in light of the seasonal hot water tables. Is that correct?
Correct.
And DEP nonetheless issued the capra permit despite those objections.
Yes.
And there was an operations and maintenance manual submitted to DEP as part of the capra application. Is that correct?
I don't recall.
Don't recall one way or another?
No.
You also raised issues concerning the seepage pits in your comments to DEP on the capra permit application. Is that correct?
Again, it was a while ago. I know we did raise the issue, but I don't really detail those quarters.
And DEP nonetheless issued the permit. Is that correct? You raised issues regarding the ability of the proposed basins to recharge all of the stormwater in your comments on the capra permit application. Is that correct?
This is not a question of whether or not Princeton Hydro registered complaints to the DEP and raised issues about the capra permit. That is not the issue before this commission, I mean, before the plane. This is going, I'm not, we will concede, we opposed the capra permit. The DEP denied the capra permit. They asked for a settlement and a few days later, and they got a settlement behind closed doors. It's on appeal. We objected to it. Where's this going to go? We objected to it. We continue to object to it.
You've said repeatedly that this settlement was behind closed doors. Are you suggesting there was something clandestine or improper about the settlement?
Mr. Jackson, it was approved what was called alternate dispute resolution. Mr. Gross wrote a letter to the Office of Legal Affairs and had obtained an approval after the denial. That's it. I'm not suggesting anything else except that that was how it was done.
You use the term behind closed doors. I just wonder if you're suggesting there was anything improper to the...
I'm just saying, I'm making this statement effect.
Okay.
I think it's highly improper to say the least, but we objected to it. We concede. We objected to it and the DEP approved it on a settlement. Period.
Okay, we're going to move on. I appreciate the objection and Mr. Schneider says he's going to get sent out here shortly, so I think we can, no, you're doing well and, Mr. Gall, I appreciate you answering the question. You've been answering the questions, yes or no. Let's just keep going. And I just can't not respond to why I think this may be relevant.
Okay.
I mean, this witness has said the GDP application is virtually identical to the capra application. It's a GDP, so yes, it's not fully engineered. And fine, this board has to make a determination as to whether it looks like it may be feasible, that they may be able to, we may be able to get site plan and subdivision or lower. And I think the board may, if it wants, consider the fact that GDPs looked at these issues. That's the...
And if I had engaged in that colloquy, Mr. Jackson would have said, "It's not time for summation." That's his summation. That's his position. We have our position. So let's, you know, I think the rules need to be applied uniformly and not where I make an argument and it's summation and I'm not allowed to make it.
Okay, that's a good point. Let's keep going. I think this is the part of the meeting we all start getting tired and maybe all cranky, so let's keep going.
Without any further of the issues you raised today, your firm also raised in comments to DEP on the virtually identical capra plan. Is that correct?
That's a pretty big question. I don't know what we objected to or what we didn't, versus that plan.
Construction impacts, that was an issue you raised. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
And DEP nonetheless issued the capra permit.
He just wants to form.
Can you hear us? We'll have to transfer it for him to review for this portion.
You heard everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Implications, the flood hazard area and repairing zones were raised in your comments to DEP on the virtually identical capra permit. Is that correct?
I didn't bring it up for this one.
Well, there were some, maybe it was Mr. Nato, flood hazard areas. And likewise, boxing in the tree save areas was a comment you raised before the DEP. Is that correct?
Maybe. I don't, like I said, it was two years ago. I had the report in front of me.
Understood. Maintenance of stormwater management systems for major development under the DEP stormwater rules. The obligations imposed on the municipality under the permit you referred to, what permit was that?
Municipal separate stormwater system.
That would apply not just to this development, but to all major development in the town of Lake Ridge. Correct?
Yes.
And you pointed out that were the board to approve the GDP, it would be appropriate to mandate that there be a homeowners association that's responsible for maintenance of the stormwater management system. Is that correct?
I don't think I stated, I think I stated if there was one, they're responsible, but the municipality ultimately is responsible.
The same as it would be in any other major development?
Yes, but again, what I stated was that the fact is this is a massive undertaking for a municipality to enforce other than other developments.
All the developments are the some undertaking for the municipality to enforce. Is that correct?
I haven't seen one with 556 seepage pits, infiltration basins, and dead ends and no way for the stormwater to discharge them.
And infiltration basins are encourage groundwater recharge. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's something DEP wants. Is that correct?
They want them to work, yes.
And the groundwater recharge is considered good for the environment. Is that correct?
If it recharges, yes.
And you haven't reached the conclusion that you can't build groundwater recharge basins that would work in this development, have you?
Can you rephrase that? I'm sorry.
Is it your testimony that these groundwater recharge basins would not work?
It was our, from what I recall from our capra review, that the bottom of those basins were a lot closer to groundwater based on the existing ponds that was provided in the documentation.
And you raised that concern with DEP?
I did.
And they issued the capra permit nonetheless?
Yes.
If you will, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll almost stop.
I'd like to ask a question. So is, are you saying they will not work or that it appears that they may not work? I'm just trying to clarify what you're actually saying.
We, again, I'm going through regulation, so not being as far as concerned, the soil data that was provided is not consistent with what we would have asked for. Who's looked at as far as the contract?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
You keep saying, "We looked at."
Oh, I'm sorry. Myself and Princeton Hydro.
So you did the study yourself, you?
Yes, my staff is in my direct response to our direction. About the analysis, I obviously said that I would do it and I would do it. It's how it works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your testimony with regard to the parking areas on the rear of the houses? At what point are you trying to make that happen?
Your roof structures, perimeter setback.
In the what setback?
The perimeter boundary setback.
And have you examined the perimeter boundary setback for the existing fairways at Lake Ridge Adult Community? So you have no knowledge one way or another whether there are parking areas within the perimeter boundary setback for the fairways at Lake Ridge Adult Community, do you?
So I guess we need to, so if you can yield my constitutional subjects or my support for it, can you hear it?
Can you get your answer?
Oh, you need your answer. I'm sorry, Mr., oh, would you repeat your answer?
I walked the perimeter and I didn't see, I didn't see parking lots in the back of those houses.
Okay, what's your objection?
My objection is that there's a different ordinance that governs the fairways, adult community project. It is not the same ordinance that this application is proceeding under, so it's really not relevant to compare it to a different development, even if we had something of that nature.
Excellent. Mr. Schneider, what's your response to that objection?
If ordinance A has a perimeter boundary setback requirement and ordinance B has a perimeter boundary setback requirement, then what's done with the perimeter boundary setback in development A under ordinance A may have some of the everything on how the municipality...
Is there not a saying that they're apples and oranges?
Well, I'm saying they're apples and apples.
I was simply, I think we could spend another half hour arguing this or we could move on and ask the question if some, you raised your objection. Unless, I would just say, unless they were. It's on record and, you know.
I was simply asked if there was a structure in the perimeter setback.
And how about in the perimeter setback, did you investigate whether there's a perimeter setback to the fairways adult community?
No.
So you have no knowledge as to whether there are structures in any perimeter setback in the fairways adult community?
I haven't seen any parking lots now.
How about basins?
How about what?
Basins.
What do you mean basins?
Stormwater basins, stormwater management basins.
Mr. Schneider, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Nato on this point. I think it's limited relevance for what kind of variance is the other.
I have other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Mr. Gall.
Mr. Gall, thank you.
Gall, I'm sorry.
It's not a redirect, are you?
No, I don't.
I don't like that word. It's a bad word.
It's not a bad word. I would like to redirect the witness, but at the next meeting, I think it's getting too late and I think I agree with you that after four hours, we all kind of...
Well, is it like a 10-minute redirect? Or we have, you have five minutes before 10?
Five minutes.
It's a whole long redirect?
Not whole long, but it's going to not be five minutes.
Okay, so let's just kind of chart out a path here. So we're going to redirect Mr. Gall, at least wanting to come back. And then you have a planner?
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
And is there any other witnesses other than your planner you're planning to present in our next meeting?
I have no other witnesses, but I do think it's imperative that the author of the fiscal impact study be brought in to testify. They were not brought in to testify. There are a number of issues. It's one of the very explicit requirements of the general development plan in the ordinance that the fiscal impact, so the witness, the person who authored that report was never here.
Mr. Schneider, do you have any issue with producing that witness?
I don't think it's required.
No.
I do not think it's required. All that's required is that we submit a fiscal impact report and we get it.
I...
Well, you don't...
How you know what your report is if you want a witness to come?
Excuse me?
If you would like a witness to come, you can...
Subpoena the board. I'll issue, I'll ask the board to issue subpoena.
Well, before starting subpoenas, so here, we have a report that Mr. Schneider's client produced and you would like to be able to cross-examine the person who wrote the report.
Yes, I would, Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Schneider, your concern about doing that is what?
I just don't think it's required. All that's required is that we submit a report and we get it.
Well, for that matter, we wouldn't have had any testimony. The ordinance, it doesn't, it has to do with due process of law, the right to cross-examine the witness, the right to find out the basis of their report.
Before you answer that, are there any other issues that you see in the road ahead of us? I'm just trying to plan. This is our fourth four-hour meeting? Fourth four-hour meeting. And I'm all for not due process, but also for bringing to a conclusion. What else do you have on the horizon other than the planner and wanting to cross-examine Mr. Schneider's fiscal expert?
Depending upon the testimony of the fiscal impact, we may bring in a witness to critique the fiscal impact report, but I need, I really need to know. a witness to critique the fiscal impact report, but I really need to know if the man, you know, we have to produce the, I can't cross-examine a report if the person who authored the report is not here.
So, what is the relevance of fiscal impact reports in this, to the GDP, is that one of the...
Well, it's an element of the process, and it shows, you know, there are sort of different components to what it requires, but I recall the fiscal impact report, in this case, was somewhat limited. I think it was actually on one of the plans, wasn't it? I believe it was a second document.
It was a small book, but it was...
I believe it was a second document. Something else, what I would suggest we do is why don't you submit a memorandum to the, to the chair, direct it through me, and prepare a proposed form of subpoena, and then I'll make the recommendation. And we'll address it at the next, before the next meeting.
So, subpoenaed it?
No, under the administrative procedure rules that government planning boards have, anyone can... There is a mechanism that... That's how I rule this. There is a mechanism that Mr. Gall could take advantage of.
No, but we have to cover court system, where can you decide?
It would be up to you.
Internal, okay, you and me, okay.
Or the board, yes.
Okay.
So, we have a meeting in between. If I make, Mr. Schneider, if I make a recommendation after discussing this with Mr. Stern, that we think the fiscal impact with, it should come in, will you produce it?
Let me know, and I'll talk to my client, I'll get you...
All right. I'm just trying to figure out statistically how we can decide this
I understand.
Without having a meeting in between.
I understand.
All right, so why don't we put that issue on the agenda, everyone will be unnoticed that that issue may be addressed at that meeting.
So, we'll decide that issue at the...
At a public meeting, and we're going to announce that this will be carried, because I don't want anyone to say they weren't part of it. I think that's an internal administrative decision, but without going public, having every discussion about it in public. So, submit a memorandum to me, Mr. Schneider can respond, and we'll address it at the next meeting whether we think it should... And hopefully, the three of us, the three attorneys, will be able to work it out before then.
Yeah, we may be able to work it out, doesn't have to consider it at the next meeting. I would say that whether...